The meeting will now, please come to order. Will the clerk please read the call of the meeting in return of service? How's that? I suppose if you can't hear me, raise your hand. Thank you, thank you, I tried. Will the meeting please come to order? Will the clerk please read the call of the meeting in return of service?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Duxbury Town Meeting Warrant, Saturday, March 9, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, 73 Alden Street, Duxbury, Massachusetts. Plymouth SS, greetings. To the Constable of the Town of Duxbury in said county, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury, qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs, to meet in the Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, 73 Alden Street in said Duxbury, on Saturday, the ninth day of March 2024, next, at nine o'clock in the forenoon for the transaction of any business that may legally come before said meeting. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof as prescribed by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, and by Chapter 2, Section 2.3.1 of the Town of Duxbury General Bylaws, at least seven days before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of this meeting, given under our hands this 12th day of February 2024. Select Board, Cynthia Ladd Fiorini Chair, Michael McGee Vice Chair, Amy M. McNabb Clerk, Fernando Guitart, Brian E. Glennon II. Plymouth SS, February 15, 2024. Pursuant to the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury herein described by posting the warrant in precincts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 to meet at the time and place and for the purposes, excuse me, as described by the bylaws of the town. A true attested copy, Mitch LeBret, Constable of Duxbury.
Unless there's some objection, we will dispense with the reading of the warrant. I'd ask you to please stand for the presentation of colors by the honor guards of the Duxbury Police and Fire.
Detention, forward, march! Left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left. Detention, march, now, march! Detention, all, left, face, freeze it, march!
Please join me with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, march! Right, face, forward, march! Left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left.
Thank you. I want to I want to start by thanking everybody who came out today for this important meeting. It's the annual time to decide what our town budget will be and several other things. Before we start, I'd like to introduce some of the people you see in the front of the room. On my left is your Board of Selectmen, and I think we have a pretty experienced group of people here today, so I don't think any of this is coming as a surprise as to who's up here. I would just in particular mention Cynthia Ladd, who is our chair, and Michael McGee is our vice chair. Next to, next to our chair is our finance director, Mary McKennan, and next to her is your town manager, Rainey Reed. On my right, we have the Finance Committee, chaired by Betsy Sullivan, and the vice chair is Friend Wyler. Up here on the up here with me is on my far left, Jeff Blake, he is our town council, and Tara Wakefield, who is our assistant town clerk, and my name is John Tuffey. Before we start the meeting, I believe Mr. Reed has some comments he wants to make. Oh, I'm sorry. Cynthia has some, some comments to make.
Josh, do you want to come up here?
It's that excise tax bill you never got around to.
Hi there. Yeah, just stand here. I am honored to present this to Josh Cutler. The resolve to honor and recognize Josh S. Cutler, whereas Josh S. Cutler, as State Representative for the 6th Plymouth District, served the constituents of the Town of Duxbury with distinction and honor from 2013 to February 2024. And whereas Josh S. Cutler, when as a resident of Duxbury, demonstrated volunteerism at its best, having served on the Planning Board, the Alternative Energy Committee, and continues to serve on the Board of Directors of the Duxbury Free Library. And whereas Josh S. Cutler has been a tireless and passionate advocate for those who need a voice, especially our seniors, our veterans, in supporting those opposing the controversial decommissioning of practices of whole tech pilgrim. And whereas Josh S. Cutler has a distinguished tenure with too many accomplishments to list, but deserving of mention are his efforts in securing and supporting funding for our public safety departments, our senior center coastal resiliency grants, green communities grants, and the Powder Point Bridge repairs. Be it resolved that on the ninth day of March 2024, the Town of Duxbury through the Select Board Chair and Town Manager does hereby recognize Josh S. Cutler for his unrelenting advocacy and offer our sincerest and most grateful thanks for his years of dedicated service to the town. We wish him the best of luck in his new role as Under-Secretary of the Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development. Thanks, Josh.
Good morning, everyone, thank you. So this is a turnabout for me, I'm usually on the giving end of these, not very good at the accepting side of it, but just very briefly wanted to thank all of you, certainly the Board of Selectmen, our town leaders, Finance Committee, School Committee, all the folks that make the town work. It was the honor of my professional career to serve as your state representative for the past decade. Every day was an honor, I enjoyed the job tremendously. I feel privileged to have worked alongside Senator Patrick O'Connor, a great partner for the Town of Duxbury. I want to thank you for supporting me, whether you were, you know, a voter for me or not, I always worked hard to represent everyone in the 6th Plymouth District and especially here in my hometown of Duxbury. I'm not going away, work over in the executive branch now, very proud to be working with Governor Healey and Secretary Jones in the Executive Office of Labor, and if there's ever any way I can continue to serve the town, I will certainly do that. So I appreciate this honor, and I share it with all of you. Thank you.
Just some, some procedural information. There are microphones available for public use at the back of the, back of the auditorium on the first level and at the bottom of the stairs on the second level. If you wish to speak to an article or ask questions, please queue up at the microphones and we'll, we'll call you. Assisted living devices are available at the table at the back of the room, should you, should you be interested in that. The fire chief has requested that I point out that there are emergency exits. One on your immediate right at the top of the, the top of the chairs and immediate left over here, and then in the back of the room, and then finally at the top of the stairs at the, at the upper level of the auditorium. I'm going to request that all cell phones be turned off while the meeting is in session except for public safety officials. And now, just a couple of, of procedures that I'd like to review with you. When you checked in, as a registered voter, you received a handheld device. That is how we will be voting. When the time comes to vote, this light will turn green. As long as the green light is on, voting is open. Thank you. It'll be on for about 20 seconds, and we'll see how that works, whether we can increase or decrease that time. When it comes time to vote, press 1 for yes, 2 for no. 1 for yes, 2 for no. If you change your mind, you don't have to erase anything. If you want to go from yes to no, just push, push the other button. Once the green light goes out, your vote will be registered and that's how it will be counted. In the event that in the event that we have a problem with the electronic voting, we will do a voice and/or hand count. If in the case of a hand count, raise your device and we will count that as a vote. That's how we'll separate voters from non-voters. I think as everybody has been notified and knows, this morning we'll shortly be taking a special town meeting within the annual town meeting. It was called to deal with some items that the Selectmen felt required of immediate attention, and it was too late to be included in the warrant for the annual town meeting. The warrant for that special town meeting is a white handout that was in the, in the outer area where you registered. The procedure will be as follows. Upon completion of preliminary announcements, I'll entertain a motion to recess this annual town meeting until the adjournment of the special town meeting, which was called for today. We will then convene the special town meeting. Upon completion of the special town meeting, we will adjourn that and take up business in this, in the annual town meeting. This is the time where we customarily ask for a vote to give permission to speak to town employees and officials who are not registered voters in the Town of Duxbury, and accordingly, I will entertain a motion to allow town employees and officials to speak should the occasion arise. We have a motion, it's been seconded, and a chance to play with our clickers. So I'm going to call for a vote. I asked you if you're in favor of it, 1 for yes, 2 for no. And I'd ask to start the voting. There we go. 1 for yes, 2 for no. If you're looking at your screen and it's, and it's not responding, bottom right-hand corner has a little circle. Press that, that's the on and off button for this device. Bottom right-hand corner turns it on. If you voted and pressed 1, you should see yes, and it should say received underneath that. That means your device is working and we're registering your vote. Okay, voting has stopped. And I have a screen up here that tells me 51 people said yes and 3 people said no. So the motion passes. Unless I hear some objection, I'll treat this vote as your permission for these people to speak at the special, who speak at the special town meeting to speak at the annual town meeting. This meeting is covered by the statutes of our town bylaws and town meeting time. In addition, I'm going to suggest we follow some procedures that I think everybody here is familiar with, and that is, all articles will be introduced by the finance, by the, by the fiscal, by the Finance Committee. Once they have introduced, made a motion, they'll give their recommendations, and then I will ask the proposer of the article to make their opening remarks. Once they've had a chance to present their article, the motion will be open for, for discussion and debate. I request that speakers keep their remarks to a minimum of five minutes, and ask that speakers don't ask to be recognized until everyone else has had a chance to answer their questions. Any lengthy or complicated motions or amendments should be submitted in writing so we know precisely what's, what's being voted upon and we can maintain, excuse me, accurate records. As the meeting goes on, there are a couple of things that may come up. You may hear somebody say, move the question. Move the question is sometimes very useful. It is designed to stop debate. It is non-debatable. We will, if two-thirds of the people say, we've heard enough and ready to make a decision, if you will, we go back to the article that's before you, the motion that's been put on the floor, and we ask you to vote yes or no. Couple of things about, about motion, about move the question. I will not accept a motion until we've had some level of debate, so at least people have had a chance to air their opinions. And for somebody who speaks to the question before the, before the meeting, I will not accept a motion to move the question from them to sort of avoid the, the, I got the last word in and now I'm going to stop debate. Reconsideration, if, should it come up, is, is should it come up, I'm hesitating here for a second because it, it is, can be made in the same session, the original motion or succeeding session. It's my sincere hope that we don't have a succeeding succession, that we'll be able to finish the town meeting today. It can only be made once, and only if somebody has information that was not available before the meeting when it was first debated and discussed. I will now entertain a motion to recess this annual town meeting until the adjournment of the special town meeting, which was called for at this date.
So moved.
We have a motion been made and seconded. All those in favors, press 1, all those in 2. Opposed, press 2. To to, to hold the special town meeting. Hold the special town meeting. We will get better at this as time goes on. There we go. Voting is now open. 1 for yes, 2 for no. Voting is closed. Motion passes 50, 53 to 0. Special, special town meeting has now been called to order. Will the clerk please read the return of service?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Duxbury, Special Town Meeting Warrant, Saturday, March 9, 2024, at 10, excuse me, 9:10 a.m. Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, 73 Alden Street. Plymouth SS, greetings. To the Constable of the Town of Duxbury in said county, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury, qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs, to meet in the Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, 73 Alden Street in said Duxbury on Saturday, the ninth day of March 2024, next, at 9:10 a.m. for a special town meeting for the transaction of any business that may legally come before said meeting. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof as prescribed by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, and by Chapter 2, Section 2.3.1 of the Town of Duxbury General Bylaws, at least 14 days before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of this meeting, given under our hands this 12th day of February 2024. Select Board, Cynthia Ladd Fiorini Chair, Michael McGee Vice Chair, Amy M. McNabb Clerk, Fernando Guitart, Brian E. Glennon II. Plymouth SS, February 15, 2024. Pursuant to the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury herein described by posting the warrant in precincts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 to meet at the time and place and for the purposes as described by the bylaws of the town. A true copy attested, Mitch LeBret, Constable of Duxbury.
Thank you, and we'll dispense with the reading of the warrant for the special town meeting unless I hear objection. Now for the business of the special town meeting. Mrs. Sullivan, may we have a motion under Article 1?
Yes, we can. Article 1, Supplemental Appropriations. I move that the town appropriate $156,320 by transfer from free cash to supplement appropriations previously voted under Article 5 of the annual town meeting of March 11, 2023, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, for line items in the budgets of the various town departments as followed. Line 1, non-contributory pensions, $13,500 from free cash. Line 2, beach operations, $81,441 from free cash. Line 3, fire. Is that there you go. I've never been accused of being quiet, so if you can't hear me, I won't suspect until you let me know. Oh, sorry. Well, I'm being corrected already out of the gate, so that's good. Let's start again. Non-contributory pensions, the supplemental is $3,500. Beach operations, the supplemental is $18,500. Fire department, the supplemental is $100,000. Police department, $25,000. Veteran services, $4,000. And Select Board, $5,320. For all from free cash, for a total of $156,320.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Motioned seconded, do we have any questions? Any comments? Street? Oh, I'm sorry. Sir?
Just starting today, what's the balance of free cash right now before we vote anything today?
Do we have a question? We have a question, does somebody have an answer? Mary McKennan, our finance director, will have an answer for you.
Prior whoa. Can we turn that volume down? Prior to taking any action today, the balance in free cash is $3,776,349.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Any other? Hello? How's that? Is that better? All right. Thank you for telling me you couldn't hear me. So we'll call for a vote, unless there are any other questions or comments. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in Voting is now open, press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Voting is closed. Motion passes 78 to 0. Article 2, Mrs. Sullivan.
Subject unpaid bills. I move that the town appropriate $3,897.93 by transfer from free cash to pay the following unpaid bills of previous fiscal years. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sums as follows. Sorry about that. Vision Government Systems, $450. FW Web Company, $103.96. Shire Town Glass and Aluminum, $133.50. Waltherm Pest Services, $223.30. Advantage Drug Testing, $541. Associated Elevator, $2,380. Amazon, $44.99. Verizon, $21.18, for a total of $3,897.93, all from free cash. Select Board and Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
Because this, because this is a paying bills from the prior fiscal year, it's going to take a nine-tenth vote to pass. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote now. When the green light comes on, voting will be open. 1 for yes, 2 for no. Voting is closed. Article passes 80, 80 to 1. Article 3, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $250,681.4 for the purpose of funding the cost items of the first and second fiscal years of collective bargaining agreements with Duxbury Police Union, MCOP Local 376B, and Duxbury Police Commanders Association, MCOP Local 376, for the period beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2025. And to meet this appropriation, that the sum of $250,681.4 be transferred from free cash to appropriate the operating budgets, to the appropriate operating budget, sorry. And that would be, to the Duxbury Police Union seventeen dollars and ninety-seven cents to the Duxbury Police Union, MCOV Local Three Seven Six B. Twenty-six thousand and sixty-three dollars and seven cents to the Commanders Association, MCOP Local Seven Three Seven Six for two hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and four cents. The Select Board and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Sir, do you wish to ask a question? No? Okay. Hearing no questions, I'll ask for a vote at this time. When the green light comes on, voting is now open. Voting is closed. Article passes seventy-eight to one. Article Four, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of six hundred thousand dollars to pay off debt service on outstanding balances, including bond anticipation notes related to the purchase of the Ricker property originally approved by way of Article Two of the special town meeting held on October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sums of five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and fourteen cents from the sale of real estate fund and fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-six cents from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance. Recommendations, Select Board and Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll now call for a vote. Voting is closed. Motion passes seventy-nine to three. Article Five, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars to the other Post Employment Benefits Trust Fund, otherwise known as OPEB, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of three hundred thousand from free cash to such fund. The Select Board and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions? No questions or comments. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Voting is closed. Motion passes seventy-seven to one. Article Six, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Stabilization Fund and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash to such fund. Select Board and Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Voting is now closed. Next motion, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the accrued liabilities and compensated absences fund and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash to such fund. The Select Board and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
We have a motion seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, press one. Voting is closed. Motion carries seventy-nine to two. Article Eight, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash to be expended under the direction of the Select Board and/or town manager to be used to provide for the town's local matched gifts and/or grants committed to and/or received by the town from time to time. The Select Board and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to support. Fiscal Advisory voted unanimously to support.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. I'm sorry, we did not, I'm anxious, I need a second.
I did second.
He did, Mr. Wyler seconded it. So we now have a motion, officially have a motion and a second, and now I'll call Motion passes eighty-one to one. That completes the business for the special town meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Sunny Die.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of concluding this special town meeting, please say, please, please press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed and the motion passes sixty-one to nothing. That concludes the meeting, that concludes the business of the special town meeting. We now reconvene the annual town meeting and start at motion, at motion one, Article Article One, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article One is a notice to inhabitants of the coming election. No vote is required and to bring their votes as follows. Annual town election, Saturday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, eight AM to eight PM, precincts one through six at Lieutenant Timothy Steele Athletic Building, one hundred thirty St. George Street, Duxbury, Mass. List of opened elected positions and ballot questions is located in the back of the warrant, which is on a table as you came in.
We're waiting for the thumbs up from, for electronic voting. He's moving from special town meeting to the annual town meeting. We're all set? Okay, we're all set. That was Article One, of which there is no vote. Article Two, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town receive the reports of town officials, boards, committees, and commissions unanimously afforded by Select Board and Finance.
Second.
Mr. Reed, are there, are there any reports that need to come before the town meeting? There are no, no reports come before town meeting. There's, move on to Article Three, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town fix the compensation of the elected town officers for the twelve month period beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-four as set forth in the column entitled Finance Committee Recommended FY-25 as printed in the warrant. Select Board voted, Select Board and Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote for Article Three, Compensation of Elected Officials. This is a majority vote. Voting is now open. All those in favor, press one. Voting is now closed. Motion passes eighty-one, yes, two, no. Article Four, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars to implement personnel policies and provide funding for any other salary or compensation not addressed by the personnel policies as printed in the warrant. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars, appropriate the sum of nine thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars from the ROCCC Enterprise Fund revenue, and transfer the sum of six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars from water retained earnings to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Select Board and Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, I'll, I'll call for a vote. Voting is now closed. Motion passes eighty-four to four. Article Five, coming up next, is the article for our annual town budget. Before we start work on that article, I'm going to, we have some presentations, one from our Finance Committee Chair, Mrs. Sullivan, one from Rainey Reed, who is our town manager, and Dr. Klingman, who is our Superintendent of Schools. And I don't know what the order of worship is here, so please jump up when it's your turn. Ladies first, I'm told.
Is this on? Is this on? Yeah, okay. This is not unfamiliar to you that are here today, and I thank you all for coming. Pardon me? Not on? What's she saying? There you go. I'm saying this is not unfamiliar, these remarks to folks that are here, and I thank you all for coming out. I do feel a bit like it's Groundhog Day. The message is very similar to other years. We have one voice that will be, is new this year. Our previous finance director, John Quincy Adams, retired, and we were very lucky to have Mary McKinnon join our team, and everybody in town should be very grateful. She has been a tremendous help, coming just as budget season started, and jumped in to the pool at the deep end and has been a wonderful, wonderful support to everyone trying to make difficult decisions. So thank you, Mary. As we've said in previous years, it's a tight budget. Through careful planning, cuts that were made that were not pleasant and, but were anticipated, we are presenting a balanced budget to you here today. Our resources are finite. Tax levy, fees with similar to the beach, and I think we all know that that, that source of revenue has been declining through various circumstances. State and federal monies that are less than they have been through COVID. During the period of COVID, there was a great deal of money flowing into our coffers, which has now been reduced dramatically. And grants, which many of our town departments and our town manager and various members of the staff and volunteers advocate for, and we do very well, but obviously it's never enough, right? Costs have increased for everybody. Costs have increased for you, costs have increased for the town. Costs of labor have gone up significantly over the last, say, three years. Materials have gone up dramatically since COVID. Utilities, you only need to open your own electric bill to know that, that has gone up dramatically and impacting budgets that people have presented. And the projects that we are currently working on obviously are costing a bit more than we had anticipated or had hoped for. Major projects that we have ahead, we have issues. Coastal resiliency issues. Anybody that has been, you know, driving in town knows that we've had some flooding, even when the storms have not been dramatic. And other impacts that we are investigating and working towards, we can't solve the problem, but at least we can anticipate doing the best we can to, to react to them. The bridge is always going to be something that we need to be thinking about, and in the years to come, will have to be either restored or replaced. PFAS, this was a relatively, it isn't new, I hesitate to say that, but it is becoming more of an issue that we are familiar with. We are always been very proud of our water supply and the quality of water that we are delivering to our community. This is something that we need to examine. It's something that has come up over the past few years, and you'll be hearing more about that later in future Articles fourteen and fifteen. Maintenance of existing buildings. We are blessed with some beautiful antique buildings that belong to the town, and anybody in town that lives in a home that is an antique knows that that blessing has, has some strings attached, and we are no exception. So that is something that these costs are something that are going to be continuing, and I, I laugh because we still call the police station the new police station. Chief, what, fifteen years? Fifteen years old? Yeah, so these things that we consider are new, very quickly outlive their warranties. The schools are anticipating changes as they go on. There are buildings there that have served us very well, but have served us for in fifty-plus years, seventy years, some of them, and there will be proposals coming in the future to restore or replace those. And there will be proposals coming in the future to restore or replace those buildings. And then there's always the ever-popular surprises. Mother Nature does deliver a little one-two punch once in a while that costs us money, and not being mindful that that could be coming is something that we we're pretty aware in New England. So, I think that one of the things that I don't relish, but I think that we are going to have to start after this town meeting, I know that the selectmen are anxious to, you know, provide the best information to the community before an override is considered by the voters, and the work is going to have to start this spring. And because we owe it to you to give you the data necessary to make a thoughtful decision on whether an override is appropriate, how much an override might possibly be, and how those funds will be allocated. And the work is going to be done. So, that is the bulletin from the front, and I will turn it over to Rainey and, oh, Danielle, oh, great, Danielle, our school superintendent, Dr. Klingman, who has been a tremendous partner to Finance Committee in helping us. They have more than half of our budget, and it is wonderful to work with such an open and helpful partner in trying to do best for the children as well as the community. So, Danielle, please.
Thank you, Betsy. And I'm not sure if my presentation is able to be put up on the screen. Thank you. If we could put on the first slide, I don't know. There we go. So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time. I'm Danielle Klingman. I'm the proud Superintendent of Duxbury Public Schools. Overall, I'm here to report that things are going very well in all of our schools. And during a challenging time, when, if you've been watching the news, many public school districts across the Commonwealth are facing significant safety and student behavioral issues, contentious contract negotiations, including teacher strikes, and sudden enrollment changes due to the influx of newcomer or migrant students in Massachusetts being placed in state-run shelters and hotels, Duxbury has been very fortunate to be able to focus on instruction and learning and supporting students' academic and social development through these critical post-pandemic learning years. We have incredible teachers, teaching assistants, administrators, and school staff members dedicated to our Duxbury students that go above and beyond every day. We have a lot to be grateful for. Also, it's not a secret, we have the best students in Duxbury. Our students impress and amaze us each day. At the elementary level, we have implemented new benchmark assessments in reading and math using a program called iReady that allows us to do progress checks on our students three times a year. And through these assessments, we can identify at-risk students and provide appropriate interventions in smaller groups with students at a similar learning level. Last year, we also implemented this iReady assessment in Duxbury Middle School, and we can now provide our fifth, sixth, and seventh-grade students with extra reading or math support during their academic support period, which is a class period that was added last school year for all middle and high school students. Another focus has been improving our special education services for our students with special learning needs. This year, we welcomed a new Director of Special Education, Teresa Skinner, who's here this morning. She came to us with years of experience as a special education director from Easton Public Schools as well as Weymouth Public Schools. Mrs. Skinner has been working closely with our Duxbury Special Education Parent Advisory Council to listen to feedback and to develop a collaborative working relationship between our families of students with special needs and the school staff. On that note, our district is also currently reviewing our English Language Arts and Math curriculum programs this year to ensure that we are meeting the needs of all students. It is really important that changes to our curriculum be studied thoughtfully and include voice from our teaching staff with the guidance of subject matter experts in the field. We will likely be piloting several new curriculum programs at the elementary and middle school levels in the coming months and year. And we are pleased that our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Wilcox, wrote a high-quality curriculum materials grant, and as a result, our district was awarded $281,000 towards new curriculum resources. We also work really hard to stretch our Title I and other grant allocations to provide math tutoring and other intervention resources for our at-risk students. I'll go back to that other slide at the end. When building the FY25 budget, we did so with a few things in mind. When meeting with town officials, school committee, Finance Committee, and Select Board members back in August, we understood that we needed to prepare a conservative-level services budget. And as you know, in a school district budget development process, we have fixed costs that result in net increase when rolling over from our budget from one fiscal year to the next. These fixed costs include contractual obligations, as salaries make up over 80% of our total operating budget. And other fixed costs can include utilities such as water, electricity, gas, and trash removal, as well as heating costs and some of our tuitions that we pay for out-of-district students, as well as transportation costs. We always start with a zero-based budget, and this year, we were able to reduce six positions that were no longer required to our current enrollment, due to our current enrollment numbers and our student needs. Another important aspect of the school department's FY25 budget is that with this level services budget, we'll be moving to a tuition-free full-day kindergarten program. Since full-day kindergarten was added during the 2012-2013 school year, it has been a priority with our, within this community to add this program, excuse me, to the school department's operating budget. In order to do this, in order to not charge full-day kindergarten this year, with the FY25 budget, we'll be utilizing the remaining full-day kindergarten revolving account to offset the kindergarten operating costs. Next year, the school department will need to plan to absorb this additional cost into our operating budget in order to continue our full-day kindergarten program. Currently, Duxbury is one of only 15 districts in the Commonwealth still charging kindergarten tuition, and our community feels strongly that this is a necessary component of a public school education in our current times. So, we're really proud of the work we're doing in the schools, and we're grateful from the support we receive from the town of Duxbury. And so, before I go, I have one more slide that I think I passed by with just some of our high school highlights, and I think that you'll see that we are really proud of the work our students are doing. We're able to offer our high school students a comprehensive program of studies with different world languages they're able to learn. We have a high success rate of our students attending colleges and being successful once they're there in college. And we've really been working hard to offer other pathways to careers for our students who may not want to go down that traditional college approach. So, that's one area that you'll see us sharing a lot about. Yesterday, we hosted a health job career fair, where we had about seven local school communities join us here in Duxbury so students could find out about opportunities in the healthcare industry. So, we're doing some great work in the schools, and we couldn't do all of that without the support of our community. So, once again, thank you for your time this morning, and I'm always around. If anyone has questions, you can reach out to my office at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. One for each of you. Morning, everybody. Thank you all for showing up. Good to have you here. Kind of a light crowd, but maybe I'll talk faster, we'll get through this quicker. Pursuant to Chapter Four, Section 4.2, the Town of Duxbury General Bylaws, I'm pleased to present to you a balanced omnibus budget for FY25. This $107 million budget includes the following increases over the current fiscal year. And by the way, I should point out, my notes were available on the back table. I don't know if you got them going in, but I'm still going to read to you because you deserve it. The general fund is up by 3.4%. The Water Enterprise Fund is up by 21.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Forgive me, I'll speak louder. The Water Enterprise Fund is up by 21.4%. The Rock Enterprise Fund is up, excuse me, the Rock Enterprise is up by 22.6%. Developing a budget requires the input, collaboration, and creativity of many individuals. I'd like to sincerely thank all of the department heads who are seated over here to my left, and the boards and committees who have worked together throughout this process to help deliver a thoughtful, prudent, level-services budget that protects the quality and variety of the core services our community depends upon. Some background. The budget process commenced in August of 2023 with an initial revenue forecast presented by our Finance Director, Mary McKinnon. She'd been here about a month, maybe. The outcomes of this forecast were largely as expected. It reaffirmed that revenue growth was not keeping pace with the rising costs of maintaining our high-quality services and ensuring a healthy work environment for our staff. We have been grappling with the supply chains, supply chain disruptions, labor shortages, and fluctuations in the prices of goods and services, all of which have directly impacted our budget across all departments. The Select Board Directive was for all departments to prepare a level services budget. In collaboration with the Finance Director, we engaged with department, excuse me, we engaged with each department to prioritize their requests, balancing the need to maintain services while accommodating unavoidable price increases. Between August of 2023 and February 2024, the Finance Committee convened 24 times, and the Fiscal Advisory Committee met 13 times to thoroughly vet all of these requests presented here today. We are we are aware that fiscal year 25 would pose challenges, and indeed, it proved to be right. Nonetheless, we have managed to navigate through it for this year. Revenues. The revenues to support our budget include property taxes, local receipts, state aid, indirect costs from the two enterprise funds, PEG access funds, and some special-purpose funds traditionally used to support targeted expenditures. Given that 97% of the tax base in Duxbury is residential, it is no surprise that 80% of our funding comes from the tax levy. We know that our levy is constrained by Prop 2.5 plus new growth. In this FY25 budget, we are utilizing essentially all of our excess levy capacity. Local receipts. Local receipts constitute 9.8% of our funding and encompass items that we manage locally, including fees for services, permits, licenses, and local excise taxes. The primary local receipt is motor vehicle excise, followed by beach permits. It is no secret that our beach revenues have declined approximately $619,000 from FY18 to '23. As a result, this decline exerts downward pressure on many areas of our budget to absorb those reductions. State aid. State aid makes up 9% of the overall funding of our budget. With the exception of FY23, historical, historically, our net state aid has remained flat, growing at less than 2% per year. For FY25, Governor Healy's budget includes increases in various local aid categories, but for Duxbury, that translates into a loss of estimated receipts of $12,000. Fortunately, the charges withheld from our local aid are projected to decrease. However, we cannot count on on that to fund our budget, as the state is too far early in their budget process. Up to this point, we've been fortunate to have ARPA funding available to finance both operating and capital budgets. But as with life, all good things must come to an end, and those funds expire in December of this year. Expenditures. Through the past fiscal year and into this budget cycle, we've faced significant inflationary pressures, leading to increased costs in various areas. To counteract rising expenses in critical lines such as electricity, gas, postage, our department heads have opted to level fund other parts of their budget. This strategic decision has helped mitigate the impact of inflationary factors to some extent. Education. This omnibus budget includes a 3.8% increase for our school district. As you just heard from Dr. Klingman, this level services budget will successfully fund Duxbury Public Schools for FY25, but collaboration among stakeholders will be crucial in navigating these challenges and developing a sustainable budget, sustainable budget plan for future years. Fixed costs. One quarter, 25% of the budget, or approximately $23 million, is for fixed expenses such as employee benefits, property insurance, legal and audit services, and debt service. This represents a 1.5 increase of the current fiscal year. The remaining 75% of the budget, or approximately $68 million, is essentially the labor and materials needed to provide the services to our community. Regional Old Colony Communications Center, or the Rock Enterprise Fund. We are currently in the first full year of the Rock operating as an enterprise fund. The budget itself has increased a little over 22%, which reflects proper budgetary funding across from all lines and the increased funding from the state's E911 Division. It is important to note that over 44% of the Rock's funding comes from state and federal grants. There are six member communities participating in this program. Duxbury, Plimpton, Halifax, Rochester, Hanson, and Hanover. And the Town of Duxbury's assessment for FY25 is $600,000, which is up from $516,000 in FY24. The Water Enterprise Fund budget of $3.4 million is up 21% over fiscal year '24 estimates. There are two primary reasons for this. First, we're proposing to add one new staff member, an Assistant Superintendent. This position is needed to address the balance workload issues, address state and federal compliance tasks, train new staff, and provide the continual oversight of our aging infrastructure. And second, we have changed the way we fund water system improvements. You'll notice that there is not a separate article in the warrant to fund water improvements. This is because we have moved that funding directly into the Water Department operating budget. The Water, the Water Enterprise is facing a number of future capital improvements, most of which are documented in the Water Master Plan. In order to fund these improvements, a rate study will need to be completed, and water rates will be adjusted accordingly. The DPW Director and Water, wastewater Superintendent will be working to complete this process over the next several months. I'm going to grab a swig of water. Pardon me, that was rushing. Project updates. PFAS. The Select Board, PFAS Working Group, and a number of our department heads continue to work on addressing PFAS issues in town. There are two articles on the warrant today seeking support. Article 14 is a consideration of a PFAS prioritization plan to develop a comprehensive analysis, analysis and treatment of options, excuse me, analysis of treatment options. And Article 15, which is consideration of a PFAS mitigation design to begin funding a project derived from the comprehensive analysis. Both of these will be discussed in greater detail later today. The Duxbury Seawall, thought it was important to give you all an update on this. To date, the town has constructed 950 linear feet of seawall under Phase One of our reconstruction plan. Last year, March of '23, the voters approved a $20 million spending measure to construct the remaining 2,860 linear feet under Phase Two. As part of the conditions of approval for the first phase of the seawall project to allow us to proceed to the second phase, the town was required to provide beach nourishment, additional sand in front of the seawall. Since the completion of the first phase, the towns of Duxbury and Marshfield were awarded $3.1 million in grant funding, which allowed us to work in partnership to deposit 74,000 tons of sand in Duxbury and 41,000 tons of sand in Marshfield, total volume for 116,000 tons. Although those figures seem seem large, they represent only 18% of the total project volume designed and permitted. Thus, it will be important to continue with additional beach nourishment projects in the future, as a higher and wider beach will provide an extra measure of protection for existing seawalls and properties behind the seawalls, thereby protecting past and present, ooh, I had a typo there. Anyways, sand is a good idea, because it's going to preserve the wall for longer. With regard to the construction of Phase Two, the Phase Two portion of the seawall itself, we're awaiting final permitting from the Army Engineers, who have distributed the documents to the regulatory agencies for comment. Once the Corps authorizes the work, hopefully in April, we anticipate that we could be able to put the project out to bid by May of this year, with construction starting shortly thereafter. We anticipate that the construction would span two construction seasons, ending in the fall of 2025. Again, these deadlines are our best estimates, predicated upon receiving the requisite permits from the various state and federal agencies. The DPW facility, the town, through our DPW Building Committee, continues to work with our engineers, architect, and owner's project manager to refine the documents for the proposed 36,000-square-foot DPW facility. The town has pre-qualified contractors for the project, and bidding documents are in the process of being finalized. We will begin the bidding process in mid-April, with an anticipated bid opening date at the end of May. Following the contract award, construction would begin in June of this year. It would take approximately 18 months. Department head staffing. In terms of staffing, particularly at the department head level, to sum up the past year in one word would be. to sum up the past year in one word would be one of transition. Since our last town meeting in March of '23, seven new employees have joined our department head team, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize those folks this morning. And if you could please either stand or give us a wave, that'd be greatly appreciated. First, our Water Superintendent, Mark Cloud. There's Mark. Our Veterans Agent, Sarah Lansing. Of course, our Finance Director, Mary McKinnon. Our new DPW Director, Sheila Scarsy. Sheila's back there. The Rock Director, Jill Kreen. There's Jill. Our Treasurer Collector, Corey Lyden. And our Town Accountant, Karen Clancy. And although she's not a department head, she's the Assistant Town Clerk. Let's all say hi to Tara Wakefield, too, back here. Let's give them a round of applause. They're doing a heck of a job. As I note in my comments, we're very happy that they've all joined us here in Duxbury and forward to working with each of them for many years to come. In closing, I know that our department heads continue to develop new and creative ideas to maintain services and contain costs. While the FY25 budget is lean, we're confident that this budget will allow us to meet our fiduciary obligations while continuing to bring the high quality of services to the residents of Duxbury for the coming budget year. And while we have faced and solved difficult budget cycles in years past, we already know that FY26 will be an especially challenging year. In the weeks that follow this town meeting, I'll be putting together a budget task force to help identify and navigate those challenges together, including taking a deeper dive into our revenue maximization capabilities, as well as our service offerings and associated costs. Finally, I want to thank all the department heads and their staff members for the work that they have done to help with this process, and I truly appreciate their efforts. And to my colleague Mary McKinnon, our Finance Director, I want to offer my sincerest gratitude for all of her efforts in helping put this information together. Just under nine months here, you've done some absolutely terrific work and truly grateful. Thank you. And one friendly reminder: Tomorrow's daylight savings. Set your clocks accordingly, please. Sunset's going to begin at 6:45 tomorrow, so we can all clap to that one. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. And now, onto Article 5, which is the town's operating budget for the coming fiscal year. The budget figures for this article start on page 15 of the warrant, if you have a warrant with you. We're going to be dividing Article 5 into three motions: The General Fund and School Operating Budget, the Rock Communication Center, and the Water Enterprise Fund. The Rock and Water Enterprise Funds are... I'm sorry, and Water Department are enterprise funds. It's an accounting issue. I'm sure Mary McKinnon would love to talk to you after this meeting and explain all of that to you. And we vote those separately. The Chair of the Finance Committee will move each of these major subheadings separately and will discuss and vote on the section that's been moved. The Chair will read the line items. If you have a question or want additional information or wish to change an amount, please shout "hold." And when I say shout, I do mean that. One of the things about this auditorium is it's designed for you to hear us, but not for us on the stage to hear you. So if we don't pick you up right away, just be a little louder. After the entire motion has been read, we'll go back and deal in numeric order with any of the holds at people's place. Once we've voted the grand total for the General Fund, General Fund and School Operating Budget will then move each separately for Rock and the Water Enterprise Fund. This is a procedure we've followed for the last many years. I think everybody here is probably familiar with it, but if you have any questions, please bring them up now. Seeing no questions, Mrs. Sullivan, may we have a motion for Article 5, General Fund and Operating Budget?
All right. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $89,512,584 as the General Fund Operating Budget of the town, as printed in the warrant in lines 1 through 91. For the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $88,250,96. Transfer the sum of $200,000 from the Pension Reserve Fund. Transfer the sum of $13,205 from the Sale of Real Estate Fund. Transfer the sum of $80,604 from Waterway Improvement Fund. Transfer the sum of $288,000 from the PEG Access Fund. Transfer the sum of $15,450 from the Seawall Betterment Reserve. Transfer the sum of $98,097 from Ambulance Receipts Reserve Fund. Transfer the sum of $137,006 from Water Enterprise Fund Revenue. Transfer the sum of $47,600 from the Rock Enterprise Fund Revenue. Transfer the sum of $284,187 from Fund Balance Reserve for Bond Premium. And transfer the sum of $97,440 from the Seawall Repairs Fund. To bring us to the total of $89,512,584. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager. After much deliberation, the recommendation from the Select Board and the Finance Committee was unanimous in support of this budget.
Second.
So, line 1, Town Meeting Expenses. Let's see. Right here, sorry. $2,500. Line 2, Moderator Salaries. Mr. Tuffy will be receiving the royal sum of $40 for his efforts. Line 3, Select Board Manager Salaries, $314,039. Expenses, $14,396. Historical Commission, line 5, Expenses, $1,000. Finance Committee, line 6, Salaries, $3,750. Expenses, $221. Accounting, line 8, Salaries, $391,668. Expenses, $13,135. Audit Expenses, line 10, $52,000. Assessors, line 11, Salaries, $263,698. Line 12, Expenses, $39,380. Treasurer Collector, line 13, Salaries, $318,815. Expenses, line 14, $123,129. Legal Services, line 15, Expenses, $195,200. Line 16, Human Resources, Salaries, $226,387. Line 17, Expenses, $45,175. Information Systems, line 18, Salaries, $277,398. Expenses, line 19, $662,000. Public Television Access Services, line 20, Expenses, $288,000. Tax Title, line 21, Expenses, $7,500. Town Clerk, line 22, Salaries, $230,121. Line 23, Expenses, $50,145. Conservation Commission, line 24, Salaries, $142,430. Line 25, Expenses, $14,286. Planning Board, line 26, Salaries, $152,686. 27, Expenses, $13,4745. Facilities Management, line 28, Salaries, $277,826. There's a grand total under general government of $4,386,147. Public Safety, Police, line 30, Salaries, $3,914,906. Expenses, line 31, $346,775. Fire, line 32, Salaries, $3,885,654. Line 32, Hold?
That hold was on salaries for the Fire Department? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Line 33, Expenses, $425,875. Municipal Services, line 34, Salaries, $658,722. Expenses, line 35, $32,100. Harbor Coastal Management, line 36, Salaries, $280,315. Expenses, line 37, $49,865. Regional Dispatch Assessment, which is line 38, is $600,000. That would be a subtotal for Public Safety of $10,194,212. Public Works, Central Building Services, line 39, salaries, $57,268. Line 40, Expenses, $164,75. Tarkill Community Center, expenses, $6,200. Animal Control, line 42, Salaries, $97,162. Line 43, Expenses, $8,195. Lands and Natural Resources, line 44, Salaries, $546,310. Line 45, Expenses, $53,100. Central Fuel Depot, line 46, Expenses, $328,500. DPW Administration, line 47, Salaries, $323,28. Line 48, Expenses, $85,350. Vehicle Maintenance, line 49, Salaries, $200,948. Line 50, Expenses, $181,500. Highway Road Maintenance, 51, Salaries, $553,64. Line 52, Expenses, $103,700. Snow and Ice, line 53, Salaries, $63,750. Line 54, Expenses, $141,800. Streetlights, line 55, Expenses, $51,000. Transfer Station, line 56, Salaries, $291,368. Line 57, Expenses, $770,405. All right. I'm going to grab a water. What do you think? Oh, perfect. Thank you. All right. Sewer, line 58. Pardon me? Line 58, Salaries, $17,459. Line 59, Expenses, $367,600. Cemetery, line 60, Salaries, $478,367. Expenses, line 61, $297,380. Subtotal for Public Works, $5,187,529. Human Services, Council on Aging, line 62, Salaries, $626,391. Line 63, Expenses, $167,761. Veteran Services, line 64, Salaries, $56,000. Line 65, Expenses, $110,300. Plymouth County Co-op Extension, expenses, zero, line 66. Subtotal for Human Services is $960,452. Library and Recreation, line 67, Salaries, $1122,449. Line 68, Expenses, $405,50. Recreation, line 69, Salaries, $252,585. Line 70, Expenses, $6,490. Percy Walker Pool, line 71, Salaries, $246,406. Line 72, Expenses, $161,649. North Hill Golf Course, line 73, Expenses, $1,500. Beach Lifeguards, line 74, Salaries, $43,200. Line 75, Expenses, $3,550. Beach Operations, line 76, Salaries, $330,918. Line 77, Expenses, $79,696. For a subtotal under Library and Recreation of $2,653,493. Schools, line 78, Salaries. Which, which?
78, 79.
78, so both in schools. Okay. Thank you. For salaries, line 79, Expenses, $8,030,248. Both held. And that would be a subtotal under school direct costs of $43,250,348. Okay. Town and School Shared Costs, Employee Benefits, line 80, Medicare, $769,340. Life Insurance, line 81, $11,162. Line 82, Employee and Retiree Health Insurance, $8,461,000. 83, Contributory Pensions, $5,933,712. Non-Contributory Pensions, line 84, $13,500. Workers' Compensation, line 85, is $268,940. Subtotal for Employee Benefits, $15,457,654. Other Shared Costs, line 86, Fire Liability Insurance, $778,375. Line 87, Reserve Fund, $180,000. Subtotal Liability Insurance Reserve Fund, $958,370. hundred and seventy-five dollars. Debt service, town and school, line eighty-eight, principal payments, four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Line eighty-nine, interest on bonded debt, one million, five hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Line ninety, interest on temporary notes, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Line ninety-one, bond expense, ten thousand dollars. Subtotal for debt service, six million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. For a total general fund of eighty-nine million, five hundred and twelve thousand, five eighty-four.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. We'll deal with the questions now, the holds that were there. Gentlemen who had a question about the fire department, if you give us your name and address, we'll, we'll move on.
Yeah, thanks. Mark McDevitt, Chestnut Street. Regarding the fire department salary items, just wanted to know, are they new positions? Are they positions that have been funded by grants that have gone away and we're deciding to continue? Just wondering if it's the right time to be doing it.
Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, is the answer to your question. Three years ago, the town hired three firefighters with a plus or minus million dollar grant. And now, the grant has expired, so we have absorbed that cost. And I'm sorry, I should have probably flagged that earlier because that was one of the bigger increases in the budget and it skipped over me. It's about a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase. And that's to absorb those three firefighters into the budget. And yes, we do think it's a good idea because the number of emergencies that the department has been responding to, not just in the last year, but if you look at it even in a shorter span, like a five-year span, has gone through the roof. So, we believe that it's very necessary. But thank you for pointing that out, I appreciate it.
For the woman, for the woman who had a question about the school budget.
Hi, Colleen Brer, Toby Garden Street. First, I have a question. You were talking in the motion, you were mentioning where all the monies were coming from in the future. If you could post that, because that's very difficult to follow, but you did mention some money coming from the pension reserve fund. Could you talk to that, please?
The pension reserve fund, we typically will make a contribution to that fund and also take funds from it. It's an annual event that's been going on for the last, I don't know, maybe five to ten years.
So, how much are you taking out of that?
We're taking two hundred out and we're putting three hundred in.
Okay. Thank you. As far as the school budget, hear about full-day kindergarten again. I'm concerned that we're going to be paying for full-day kindergarten, as you said, with the OPEB, the other post-employee benefits. I missed the special town meeting, but we have a sixty-eight million dollar liability. It's not a budget item, it's a liability. I know it's an estimated one, but it's, I'm assuming fairly accurate. And we only have six million in that fund right now. I know we're adding some, but you just said we're taking some out. And, sorry, I always get nervous up here.
No, 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 it's fine. Colleen, is your understanding that the full-day kindergarten is going to be funded from that source?
No, no, not at all.
Okay, sorry, okay.
But thank you. No, but I do know that we've had a revolving fund and typically I see that you've been putting in four hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars as the offset from the revolving fund for the full-day kindergarten. And I understand it's important to some people. People moved to this town, there's only fifteen left. We knew when you moved here, that you've been living here, that it's not full-day kindergarten. People have been paying it. I feel like we should be taking that four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars and putting it into our OPEB fund. So, I'd like to reduce the school budget by four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And I do understand they can do whatever they want with their money, but if they're going to sit and say, oh, we can't, you know, fund a new lab for the high school now or whatever, I think it's ridiculous. Let's operate in good faith if people do agree that we shouldn't include four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for the full-day kindergarten and use it for our employees who are expecting us to pay their post-employee benefits. And as it said in the special town meeting information, it's useful for our ratings, it helps us save money when we're getting loans, et cetera. So, I think it would be a wise choice for us not to include the four hundred and forty-three thousand for kindergarten and use it towards our OPEB fund.
So, I can be corrected by folks that are more, you know, knowledgeable on this, but the funds for the full-day kindergarten are coming from a revolving fund that was created to support full-day kindergarten through tuition-based and offset expenses. So, I'm not sure if those funds can be allocated to another purpose.
No, I'm not asking money to be moved. I'm asking us not to give the additional four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, which they're requesting, to replace the revolving fund that they're saying they're no longer going to have.
So, Mayor? I, I'm, Colleen, I know I'm being dense here.
No. I have a difficult time explaining what I'm thinking.
No, 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 it's okay. So, you would like, you would like to, so your amendment or your request is to just remove that amount from the school budget?
Correct, and let them continue their revolving fund to get those funds, if that's what they need to run their full-day kindergarten. So, for us here at this town meeting, all I'm asking is to remove four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars from the school budget. And they can get their funds through the revolving fund as they've been doing. That's their issue.
I believe that was their intent anyway. Danielle, did you?
It doesn't look like it in this budget information.
Dr. Klingman? Dr. Klingman, before you start, I've sort of lost track a little bit of what you'd like to do.
Remove four hundred and forty-
My understanding, if I may, my understanding is you would like to reduce the school budget by?
Four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
Four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
Correct.
And?
That's it.
That's, that's what you're looking to do in a nutshell?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Not, not just yet. Dr. Klingman?
I'm not sure what to say, except that the current budget that we've proposed and has been approved by school committee is that we would reuse the remainder of the kindergarten tuition account to not charge tuition for the FY twenty-five school year. And so, you're suggesting that we not stop charging tuition so that we continue to have approximately four to five hundred thousand dollar offset heading into the fiscal year twenty-five budget?
So, according to what I have for your operating budget, it's showing that there is no offset, or there is?
We're anticipating, we're anticipating an offset of approximately four hundred and forty-three thousand utilizing-
Okay, so for this year's budget, you're, you're not asking, you're still using revolving funds money?
Yes.
So, for next year, you'll be looking for the additional four hundred and forty-three thousand for full-day kindergarten, is that correct?
We wouldn't be able to speak to what our FY twenty-six budget would be.
But your proposal-
We would be absorbing a typical offset of around four hundred thousand dollars would be what we were planning on, would be planning on absorbing into our FY twenty-six budget as we roll over.
So, I'm sorry, you're going to continue the revolving fund next year?
No. That would be FY twenty-six. We're here talking about FY twenty-five.
I understand that, I just want to make sure I understand going forward. So, you're using up all your money in your revolving fund this year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then I withdraw my request and we'll come back next year. Thank you.
We'll see you next year.
Excuse me, sir.
Okay, I believe that that is-
Excuse me, sir. Up here, right?
Thank you. I'll recognize you, you've been very patient, and we'll deal with the woman behind you.
Oh, excuse me.
No, I think you were there first. Go ahead.
To continue the ongoing discussion about using the tuition account for kindergarten. I wrote a letter to the Clipper a couple of months ago, and I'm just going to state it here, that I think that it was dead wrong of numerous school committees to be intentionally overcharging Duxbury parents who are desperate to get their kids in the kindergarten to the point where they created a profit center from that tuition money. And that they now, instead of refunding it to the people who paid that tuition, want to give it to the lucky class of twenty-twenty-five parents who are going to save four thousand dollars when it came out of hard-earning people's pockets. Thank you.
Thank you. The woman?
Yep. Hi, I'm Jen Whedon. I live at one-eighty Union Bridge. I'm a parent, I'm also one of the board members of the Duxbury Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We work frequently and well with Dr. Teresa Skinner, and our partnership has been fruitful. I still remain concerned about the transparency and integrity of the budget decision-making process as it relates to using special education funds, particularly the reserve fund. We've engaged the admin and budget committee several times to get clarity and are continually told that, you know, budgets are complicated and a sort of Byzantine explanation of how money gets moved around. Most of us have advanced degrees and are still unable to fully grok what's actually happening. We know that there are unmet needs. Almost twenty percent of the kids in our district are on IEPs, which means one-fifth of our kids are touched by these sorts of decisions. We also have a very high out-of-district placement rate, which is quite pricey. I, you know, beg to ask, why is this the case? Is it perhaps because we have room for improvement in providing services in our own district? Overall, I've yet to see a, what looks to me to be a rigorous evaluation of how well we're meeting these needs at a systemic level, which makes it hard to have informed budget decisions on the level of service. So, my ask is really for more rigor, transparency, self-reflection, and humility around what we are and aren't able to provide for our children. Thanks.
Thank you. To the gentleman on, in the balcony.
Dan Kostreba, Elm Street. My question is about the bonded debt. I know it, I'm bringing this up now as part of school, I guess, but I am curious about our total bonded debt and the retirement schedule for it, but we're not going to get into that right now as detail. But where do we, where do we get a schedule or access of the debt that we have and the retirement schedule?
Mrs. McKinnon, do we have an answer?
The second part of my question, while we're waiting, is my understanding of Prop Two and a Half is that we can spend up to aggregate two and a half, or we can tax two and a half percent more than the previous year's total. But that if we don't do that, then next year, let's say we were five million dollars short of that, next year, we can't multiply that five million by two and a half. In other words, cutting things now or not spending the money forever hampers us going forward in terms of what we can raise. And I guess the second part, because I'm asking about debt, is could you, if we were up against it and we needed to spend the two and a half percent, could we pay down debt as an appropriation early to do that?
So, that's great. That's a great number of questions, and let's see if we can get some answers for you. All right, Mrs. McKinnon.
Okay, great. Is this on? Excellent. To answer your first question on where you find the debt schedule, I'm happy to send it to you directly. So, if you'd like to reach out to me next week, I can email that to you. Short of that, I can also publish it on the website for, if other folks are interested in seeing that, we can put that on the finance department page for you. In terms of, and if I don't answer all of your questions, please feel free to ask again. In terms of Prop Two and a Half, you're absolutely correct. If the town does not utilize the full increase allowable under Prop Two and a Half, it becomes what's called excess levy capacity. That excess levy capacity is available for one year only. It expires at the end of the fiscal year. So, if the town does have excess levy capacity in one year, they can utilize that excess levy capacity in the subsequent year. That excess levy capacity, you're not adding an additional two percent, two and a half percent on top of the capacity. The two and a half percent is calculated on the entire tax levy at the beginning of the process of building the budget. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I guess the point is that if we go and we cut a half a million dollars from the school budget, and we don't let, you know, we don't have levy to pay for the original five hundred thousand, then going forward, we could conceivably be able to tax less and have less operating funds in the future.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And then, you had one last question, which was about debt, payment of debt service.
Yep.
And so, the debt service is included, some of the debt service is included within our tax levy, and a large portion of our debt service is debt excluded. But you asked the question on whether we could utilize appropriations in order to pay off debt early, and the answer is sometimes. So, when, when we issue debt, there is a period during which the debt is not callable, meaning we cannot pay it off early. Once it reaches a certain maturity, then there are pieces of debt that could be potential candidates for early payment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On page eighty-eight of this well-done and hard-worked publication, there is a listing of the general fund debt. It is not going to give you the payment schedules, but it will give you the listing of the debt that is outstanding and balances, just to start the information going. All right? Page eighty-eight.
To the gentleman on my left.
Jeff Ladd, Bay Road. I wanted to say thanks, I'm a father of five, one who's been through kindergarten, one who's in it now, and three that are coming up, pair of which are twins, so that would have been a tough year for funding kindergarten. So, I certainly appreciate that being proposed into the budget, and the town for voting for it, hopefully in favor. I wanted to say that, but then the gentleman brought up the profit center point, and I was surprised by that. And I don't know if this is the forum to speak to that, but I gotta, I gotta understand that a little bit better.
Why don't we answer, answer the gentleman's question? Having said that, I do believe the proper form is to deal with the school committee at one of their meetings. This is, this is about setting next year's budget. But having said that, please, Dr. Klingman?
So, I'll just briefly comment that we operate a year in arrears for our budget planning process, and so, the way we collect tuition from our families is the current students that are in kindergarten are paying tuition up until May. So, we aren't able to plan on those funds being utilized in the same fiscal year that the students are in attendance. And so, when planning, when you're, when you're doing your budget planning, there has been, we've been trying to operate, and it's not a full year in arrears, but we're using funds year to year so that we can operate the kindergarten program, which is not fully funded through tuition. There are kindergarten expenses that are paid for numerous amounts of kindergarten expenses that are paid out of our operating budget. That is why we have at the end of a year, while we use some of it as an offset, some of the funding, we also have some that remains in that revolving account heading into the next fiscal year.
Can you say how much carries over? I mean, is it an excessive amount, or it's just a rounding error?
It's, it's around four hundred thousand year to year. Our Director of Business and Finance, around five hundred thousand. So, we're expect, right now, we're still using, utilizing the kindergarten revolving account to offset our FY twenty-four budget. So, we're anticipating around five hundred thousand, between four hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand to be carried over into next fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we have, are there any more questions? Please.
Thank you. My name is Betsy Gillis, and I live at seventy-one Pond Road in Duxbury. I have a feeling that the school budget will be voted on and approved, but I would like to make a couple of statements for consideration of what's being voted on, and it's specifically about the use of special education reserve funds to bridge the budget gap. So, the rhetorical questions I have are, is use of that funding appropriate and permissible according to the policy? The second is, does it make good fiscal sense to do so, given that we will be faced next year with the dilemma of funding full-day kindergarten? And a third- be faced next year with the dilemma of funding full-day kindergarten? And a third, rather, is it the right thing to do with that money? I absolutely do support full-day kindergarten, but not at the expense of what's possible for sped students with these proactive and protected funds. The fact that Duxbury hasn't figured out how to keep pace with communities, other communities, and offer a full-day funded kindergarten should be on full display for taxpayers, not hidden by offsets, which is what it looks like to me. And so it's more of a comment than it is a question. And thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy, and I know that Dr. Klingman will respond, but we had the same question about the funds and how it worked. And when we created that reserve fund, it was based on legislation from the state. And it also set guidelines as to what the appropriate amount that should be held in that account should be. We reached that balance by an understanding between the town and the schools that funds that they had at the end of the year, they have a large budget. So at the end of the year, there were some funds that were available that had not been expended. They turned them over to the town with the understanding that they would then, at the next town meeting, which is how we had to appropriate the fund, add them to this sped reserve fund. Currently, that reserve fund is in excess of what the statute maintains is good practice. So the fund is not being rated or inappropriately used to offset some special education funds, but rather is balancing it to be in line with what is considered the appropriate. And I'm speaking a bit out of school to say the statute maintains that it should be, but that was where the funds, that source of the funds. And that satisfied us that they were available for this purpose. And I'm sure that, you know, Diane, Danielle can speak to it better than me, but that was our question, and we were satisfied with the answer.
Betsy, I don't think I could have explained it better, but I will say that out of our entire $43,250,348 budget, 21.9% of the total budget is spent on special education services. We currently have $2,802,820 in anticipated special education out-of-district tuition costs. And if we are suggesting in this budget, just in full transparency, that we would be accessing $255,719 towards our entire $9.5 million special education operating budget. So we feel as though the special education department is appropriately funded. And while there's no limit to the amount of services we would like to offer our students, we, in this level of services budget, feel as though our budget is appropriately budgeted to best support our students.
Thank you. I appreciate, Betsy, your description, because that's exactly how I understand it as well.
Good.
What's interesting about the policy of note is that there is a clause that says that the funds will include, for transfers out, limited to, but not, sorry, they list the permissible uses, but there's a clause that says not limited to. I understand that the funds we're talking about, it exceeds what's in the fund. It's over that ceiling, as I understand it.
Yes.
But I wonder, and I don't think it's up for discussion, but I just want you to know the CPAC community does wonder this. Is this an opportunity, right? So these are proactively collected and protected funds, and we're doing an ELA review. And it just seems to me that an appropriate, a very appropriate use of this fund, of these funds, would be to invest in that, in whatever, for example, literacy program we decide if we are going to change that we use. There, I think there are opportunities abound for the sped community. And if we're collecting them anyway, I think it would be worth considering, is all. I think it will pass. I think that's what, we're going to go forward with it, but it is the stuff that we wonder about as taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Please.
Hi, my name is Karen Wong. I'm at the Road, and I cannot believe that 20 years later, we're talking about full-day kindergarten. I literally fought for full-day, tuition-based full-day kindergarten, optional tuition-based full-day kindergarten 20 years ago, when my now 26-year-old was entering kindergarten. I also want to say that in the early days of me-parenting here, we didn't have to pay for the bus. So parents are paying for a lot of things. They're paying for the bus. They should not have to pay for full-day kindergarten. This is really ridiculous that we're even talking about it. Thank you.
Are we ready for a vote? So I'm going to ask for a vote on motion number one. Just to refresh your memory, it is on the general fund and school budget in a total amount of $89,512,584. Voting is now open. One for yes, two for no. Motion passes 119 to 10. Mr. Sullivan, motion number two.
Okay. Yep, all right. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $4,076,951 from the Rock Enterprise Fund revenue for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and further, that $47,600 be raised from Rock Enterprise Fund revenue to fund indirect costs associated with the Rock Enterprise Fund appropriated in the general fund as identified in Article Five, Motion One. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Line, Regional Dispatch, line 92. Salaries, $3,136,857. Line 93. Expenses, $987,694, for a total of $4,124,551.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions about this budget? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Voting is now open. Motion passes 112 to eight. Motion three, Mrs. Sullivan.
Water Enterprise Fund. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $3,303,304 from the Water Enterprise Fund revenue for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and further, that $137,906 be raised from Water Enterprise Fund revenue to fund indirect costs associated with the Water Enterprise Fund appropriated in the general fund as identified in Article Five, Motion One. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Select Board and Finance Committee voted unanimously to support the operating budget water. Line 94. Salaries, $1,126,497. Line 95. Expenses, $1,829,336, for a total of $2,955,833. Debt service water. Line 96. Principal payments, $394,045. Line 97. Interest on bonded debt, $81,332. Interest on temporary notes, zero. Bond expense. Line 99. $10,000, for a total of $485,377. Total Water Enterprise Fund, $3,441,210.
Second.
Voted unanimously by Finance Committee and the Selectmen to support.
So we have--
Select Board, sorry.
So we have a motion, we have a motion that's been seconded. Are there any questions or any comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the Water Enterprise Fund. Voting is now open. Motion passes 125 to two. Thank you. I think we've passed the town budget in record time. Article Six, Article Six is the capital budget for the town. And before we start to actually deal with that article, we have a presentation from Fiscal Advisory Committee.
Hello, everyone. I'm Alex Shin. I'm the Chair of the Fiscal Advisory Committee. We are a eight-member committee that is really in charge of looking at the long-term strategy and capital projects for the year. I, too, would like to reiterate our gratitude to Mary for this year. It's been a really great budget season. She came in and really did jump into the deep end of the pool and help us out and really put together a great budget for the year. So my lovely presentation behind me, hopefully this is great. This is just a quick agenda. Just going to want to spend a couple of minutes on sort of our overall process, our strategy, and how we sort of think about the budget. As I mentioned, we are supposed to be a nine-member committee. We are currently eight. So if anyone out there would like to join Fiscal Advisory, please let me know. We are always looking for talented individuals. That's my cheap plug for Fiscal Advisory. The decision-making process, there's four, really four big things we're looking for. You know, do we have enough money to pay for these things this year? Will we have adequate future revenues to meet our future needs? How do requests fit into the long-term planning priorities of the town and capital expenditures? We have some very capital-intensive departments out there. And how can the town best prepare for future unknowns? So this is a little bit of the nitty-gritty in this town, this year's budget. Departments came to us with about $7.8 million in requests. We clearly don't have $7.8 million to fund all of these requests. This is not new this year. This sort of happens every year, and this is why we go through the process that we go through. Fiscal Advisory approved just over $4 million. Capital requests this year, this year was a little bit of an unusual year because we were able to, or the town was able to, fund just over $1.6 million from ARPA funding. So if you think about that $7 million, we were going to vote on about $4 million here in Article Six. An additional $1.6 was approved through ARPA funding. So that $3 million delta is not quite three. It's, you know, 1.4 or something like that, but it's not uncommon to the delta that we normally see every year. Other things that Fiscal Advisory voted on this year, you know, we talked about the beach lease, the Article 14 and 15, the PFAS and design and remediation, design and permitting, the CPC articles around the town clock and open space. This slide is just a notice to the townsfolk of where we are, our position for free cash and some of the other enterprise accounts or other accounts that we use to fund capital projects. The capital budgeting process, you know, we go through, we try to work with the department heads. The department heads prioritize their list, and then we go through and prioritize our list. Just because something didn't get approved this year does not mean it wasn't important. It's not needed. Most of the time, we just run out of funding. And we try to align with our priorities, with the town and safety initiatives. But at the end of the year, most of these requests will come back in future years. Just for definitional purposes, you know, capital is defined as something that's over $25,000 and has a life expectancy of more than five years. And we try to spend 2% to 5% of the tax levy limit in capital each year. Funding for capital, 40% to 60%. There are some financial policies through the town, and this slide goes through some of the financial policies of how we should think about spending free cash for our, for capital. So 40% to 60% of free cash should be spent on capital, and we'll strive to generate a free cash balance of 3% to 5% of the general fund annually. You know, we also look for grants and earmarks and retain earnings from enterprise accounts. You know, sometimes we have to finance through debt, under the levy, over the levy, and then sometimes reach into the capital stabilization fund that was created two or three years This slide here just talks about sort of our current debt. There was a gentleman in the balcony earlier that asked about sort of the current debt. It's something that's top of mind for us as well. There's about $71 million out there in debt with, you know, about $7 million in annual debt service. There should be about 2.3 rolling off in the next five years. But things that aren't currently on the debt schedule yet are the DPW building, the $20 million in seawall. There was a brush breaker approved last year, and some school projects that were approved last year that haven't been on the debt schedule yet. So if you think about sort of the 71, you need to add the things that we haven't gone out yet to get debt service for. And in today's meeting, there's another article that's looking for another million dollars to add to the Water Enterprise debt for PFAS design and permitting, Article 15. You know, some of our concerns is, are around, you know, how do we provide existing services where the costs are outpacing our revenue growth? It's a large concern. Betsy talked about it, Renee. Everyone has talked about it. It is a real thing, and it's coming to a head sooner than we would like. I try to put this information out there just to talk through what does $20 million in debt look like to the average homeowner, the average home in Duxbury. And there are some links. They're hard to read. I think, I think we post this to the town website so you can go through the links. But you can calculate these on your own at the Department of Revenues website. But if you look at a $20 million bond, the impact for the first year of debt service is around $254. Some of our concerns is, are the, you know, we do not have a really great comprehensive portfolio of what are the town needs, what are the projects? We talk about coastal resiliency. We talk about sidewalks. We talk about the bridge. There are a lot of these projects out there that we need to prioritize and think through, you know, how are we going to pay for these things going forward? There are a lot of these projects out there that we need to prioritize and think through, you know, how are we going to pay for these things going forward? Just some recommendations going forward. You know, Renee talked about putting a budget committee together, and some of the things we need to think about is really creating this list and prioritizing it, thinking through strategic planning and benchmarking. What are the other funding sources we can use? How can we improve the budgeting and capital budgeting process going forward? And that concludes my slides. There are some, three additional slides that go a little bit more into debt for those that are interested and sort of want to get into that and happy to answer questions when I can. Thank you.
General Government Capital Budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $2,845,341 for the purposes and in the amounts specified as follows. And to meet said appropriations, transfer the sum of $1,893,866 from free cash. Transfer the sum of $675,000 from the Capital Investment Trust Fund. Transfer the sum of $126,475 from Waterways Improvement Receipts Fund. And transfer the sum of $150,000 from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation fund. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Recommendations, Select Board voted 401 to recommend. Finance Committee voted 70 to recommend.
Second.
And do we have any, do we have any questions or comments?
I have the lines to read, John. Is that all right?
Yes, please.
Okay. Line one, Powder Point Bridge. $300,000. Information Systems, convert rock and fire access control and camera systems, $40,000. Replace 1,700 Chromebooks, year one of a four-year lease, $145,000. Line four, Core Switches and Access Points, $112,152. School Security Cameras, $75,000. Facilities Management, Old Town Hall Exterior Painting, $50,000. On the painting?
Seven and eight, please.
I'm sorry, say again?
Seven and eight.
Okay, so we were on four and five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Do you want this, so are you looking at the painting on the Old Town Hall?
Yes.
And was there something else that you wanted to hold on?
You ran number five, and then skipped to number eight.
I'm sorry, I skipped to seven, yeah.
Seven and eight. So you were in the, just the schools, Colleen? You didn't, you're not trying to hold on Old Town Hall? You're holding on the, on the school requests only?
No, eight as well.
Eight.
Old Town Hall, yes, eight.
Okay, great. Old Town Hall, perfect. DHS and DMS Remote Terminal Unit Controller Upgrade and Rebalance, $150,000. DHS Open Classroom Renovation, $250,000. Duxbury Schools Total, $400,000. Public Safety, Police Department, Police Patrol Replacement Program, $224,89. Line 10, Firearms Program, Handgun Replacement, $43,304. Fire Department, Replace Ashtray Station Radio Remotes, Phase Two, $31,000. Replace an Ambulance, $525,000. Replace Cardiac Monitor, $37,000. Harbor Master Department, Line 14, Repower a 25-foot Safe Boat, $53,551. Line 15, Replace Three Marine- Was there a hold there? Or did somebody cough?
I believe somebody coughed.
Somebody coughed, great. Line 15, Replace Three Marine Floats, $72,924. Public Safety Total, $986,868. Highway Road Maintenance, Line 16, Replace Number 19 Truck, oh, no, with nine yards Plow Sander. That'd be $364,205. Line 17, Mechanic Truck, $105,000. Lands and Natural Resources, Replace Bandit Chipper, $97,000?
No, 98.
$98,000, thank you. Line 19, Toro Groomer, $46,976. Line 20, Replace Truck Number 30, $82,140. Sewer, Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Upgrade, $40,000. Public Works Total, $736,321. General Fund Total, $2,845,341. One holds.
And so we have a hold on the painting of Old Town Hall?
Yes. Hi, Colleen Brer, Toby Garden Street. So I'm just curious about the open classroom renovation. I understand when, you know, however long ago the schools were done, that was a required part to help with whatever program they were going to be doing for teaching. I was just curious what they were doing with the renovation for a quarter of a million and why.
I think we have an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Knoll, Facility Director.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Christina Knoll is former Director of Facilities. So the open classroom renovations, you're correct. When the school was constructed in 2013, there were four areas that were left open for team spaces. Due to the current classes that we offer and have offered and the way that the curriculum is structured, those open spaces now are basically closed with partitions. So there's no doors, there's no light switches where they should be, and they've been utilized this way for a number of years.
Yes, since the beginning.
Right. So at this point, we now know that we don't need those team spaces. We need classrooms. So we were fortunate enough to have the architect who built the school come in for free and do a study, draw us up plans, and this is what those plans identified.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I don't know who will answer this one. Sorry, I just had a quick question about the Chromebooks. I thought I saw something in the school budget for computers as well. Is that something different? And I know at one point we had tried to include things like that that are on ongoing basis in the budgets. But have we gone back? Because I noticed the police cars are back in the capital as well. I didn't know what the protocol was anymore for that, those types of items.
Thank you, Christina. Also, just to add to the open classroom spaces, they also pose a significant safety concern when we go into any kind of lockdown or shelter-in-place situation where any students that are in hallway spaces and teachers need to find the closest classroom to be able to appropriately lock down.
Yep.
So this has been a concern not only for hallway distraction noise when people are walking back and forth in the hallway and we're instructing in those spaces, but also from a safety standpoint.
Yes.
To answer the question, you were specifically wondering about the Chromebooks?
Well, I noticed the Chromebooks here, and I thought I saw something in your other, in the big budget about computers. And I was just curious. And I know when I was on the Finance Committee, we tried to put things that were like an ongoing basis like that in the budget, and I didn't know what the protocol is now because I also noticed the police cars are back in the capital budget. So I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. I'm not sure if it was one of our capital budget presentations, but we do have our technology devices and infrastructure requests go through, they all go through the capital process. And so it's now time for us to replace the Chromebooks for students in grade six to 12. They've reached the end of their useful life, and these are the Chromebooks that survived pandemic remote learning when our kids were home. These have seen a lot, these computers. And so it's our rotating request that it is now up, and we are also considering leasing again as options. So that will also represent a cost savings with some of these devices. And so it's not in a separate line in our operating budget. It's only in our capital requests.
Okay. So the 145, it's this year, and then in another number of years, you'll come back and say we need another 145? This isn't an ongoing, every-year thing?
It will be in the next, for the next four years because it is a lease. Whereas if we had come to do all of them at once to be able to purchase them as a district, we wouldn't have come back for another five or six years.
Okay. Thank you. And then my other was the Old Town Hall exterior painting. That was just a ploy to get up here and ask about the Tarkham Building painting. Because I've noticed when I've driven by, I don't know if they've done anything in the last few months. I haven't really paid attention. But the Tarkham Building looks like it needs a good going over again.
Sure, yeah, that's noted, and we'll take a look at that and make sure that, you know, we're very transparent with what our capital project budgeting is, you know, on a five, 10-year lookout. So that's certainly something that we'll notate.
Okay. Is that list available somewhere? Because again, sorry, but Capital Committee, I can't remember your name, but Fiscal Advisory said it was, it seemed concerning to me that you don't have a good idea of all the projects. I'm just curious why. I mean, it seems to me Central Building Services, Facilities Management, DPW, you all should be, it seems like every year, giving Fiscal Advisory a list and saying, hey, this is our outlook, and they should be able to prioritize. Obviously, some things sneak up on us, a new truck here and there, but I was just kind of surprised.
I mean, each one of our departments does meet with Fiscal Advisory, you know, many times before we bring these articles in front of the public.
Yeah. Again, I'm just surprised that Fiscal Advisory doesn't feel like they are as informed, it sounds like, as the projects that they should be. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Chin, did you want to say something?
Thanks. Colleen, just to, I guess, clarify, I think when we talk about listing of projects where it's a little more global of, you know, every department comes to us every year. They have a five-year strategy and a capital plan that they bring to us. It's very well thought through. Our concern is more of, you know, you have some of these other things. There's a sidewalk committee. There's coastal resiliency, a number of studies that have gone on. We don't have a global list of those types of projects, and that's what I was trying to convey. So I apologize if there was any confusion.
Are we ready for a vote? I think we are. So unless I hear an objection, I'm going to call for a vote on Article 6, motion number one. Voting is now open. All those in favor, press one. Voting is closed. Motion passes 136 to 5. Article 6, motion number two, Mrs. Sullivan.
Water Enterprise Fund Capital Budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $1,196,839 for the purposes and in the amounts specified below. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $1,196,839 from water retained earnings. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Recommendations, Select Board voted 401 to recommend. Finance Committee voted 70 to recommend. Water, oh, sorry. Water Enterprise Fund, line 22, Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Radios, $70,000. Replace Truck Number Eight, line 23, $77,167.
That was a hold on line 23?
On the truck? Yep. Okay, thank you. Line 24, Mini Excavator and Trailer, $105,000. Line 25, Replace Truck Number Four, $109,672. Water Main Replacement, $750,000. Unidirectional Flushing Program, $85,000. For a total of $1,196,839.
Let's go back to the hold then.
Truck Number Eight.
Good morning. Wendell Searning, 85 Bay Ridge Lane. I'm also the Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee. I popped this in at this point because I just wanted to make sure that what was going on here, on the purchase of all these vehicles, that the town is still following the guideline that it adopted some years ago, that when hybrid or electric options are available, they would be taken. So, you know, it's not described here. I just hope that the town continues to follow that commitment.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, do you know anything about this truck in specific?
To address Wendell's primary concern, and good to see you, Wendell. Thank you for coming. Yeah, that is sort of the overarching premise whenever we're purchasing a truck. We do try to keep in mind our compliance with the Green Communities Act. In this case, this may not be one of them, though. But when we can, we do look for the green product. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote on Article 6, motion number two. Voting is closed. Motion carries 123 to 7. Article number seven, Mrs. Sullivan.
Small Equipment and Minor Services. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $56,527 in the amounts specified below. And to meet said appropriation, the town vote to transfer the sum of $54,217 from free cash and transfer the sum of $2,309 from the Waterways Improvement Fund to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Select Board and Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
Police, line one, Police Station Interior Painting, $5,100. Two, Police Station Parking Lot Security, $4,509. Fire Department, Replace Three, are you kidding me? Laryngoscopes? One per ambulance. I'm sure we need them. $10,500. Harbor Master, line four, Marine Unit Five, Anti-Filing Bottom Painting, $2,309. DPW Highway, number five, Align Painter for Road Striping, $5,735. Cemetery, line six, Replace the Cemetery Mower, $14,613. Library, line seven, Library Carpet Replacement, Phase One, $5,761. Recreation, line eight, Replace the Pool Vacuum, $8,000. For a total of $56,527.
Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. Voting is closed. Motion passes 130 to three.
Article eight.
Article eight.
Union Contracts, I move to indefinitely postpone this article. Select Board and Finance Committee supported unanimously.
Second.
Motion to indefinitely postpone because we don't have anything to take up. I'm going to call for a vote. Motion, voting is closed. Motion passes 199 to three. Article Number Nine, Mrs. Sullivan.
Electronic Balloting. I move that the town appropriate the sum of 20,000 dollars to fund the cost of operating electronic balloting at town meetings. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of 20,000 from free cash. Select Board and Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article Number Nine, Electronic Balloting. In case you're wondering what that interlude was about, you did vote on electronic balloting, unfortunate, well, the slide I'm looking at says Union Contracts, that was a typo on the slide. So Article Number Nine passes 115 to six. It's kind of funny that we have this little bit of confusion on the typing since it's on electronic voting. What are you going to do? Article Number Ten, Mrs. Sullivan. Article Number Ten, before we start, Article Number Ten is the Duxbury Lease. At the very end, when we vote, it's going to take a two-thirds vote for this to pass.
Duxbury Beach Lease. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of 1 million dollars to be expended under the direction of the town manager for the purpose of leasing Duxbury Beach, being that portion of land in the towns of Duxbury and Plymouth owned by the Duxbury Beach Reservation Inc. south of a line running approximately east to west along the northerly edge of the northerly parking area at the east end of the Powder Point Bridge, subject to an area of land excluded at High Pines used by the Duxbury Beach Reservation, and to authorize the Select Board, or its designee, to execute a lease on the behalf of the town for the period beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending, 24, sorry, what did I say, 21? Oh, my God. That's scary. And ending June 30th, 2025, on such terms and conditions the Select Board deems in the best interests of the town. The Select Board and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to support.
Second.
And Fiscal Advisory was 3-3 split.
And do we have a second? Yes. We do have a second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Reed has asked that the Executive Director of the Beach Lease, Chris, your last name, I'm horrible with names. Chris Lutazi, Executive Director, has a presentation to explain what this is about, but Ms. Lutazi is not a resident of Duxbury. So I need a motion for her to address town meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion second for her to be able to speak. We'll have a vote now. Yes, to allow her to speak, two. It was a no, she won't be able to speak. Voting is now open. Voting is closed. Motion passes 101 to 23. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Chris Lutazi, and I'm representing Duxbury Beach Reservation this morning. Before you vote on Article Ten, I thought it'd be worthwhile to speak a little bit about the history of the lease. As most of you know, Duxbury Beach Reservation is a nonprofit that owns and maintains Duxbury Beach. Our mission is threefold, to preserve the landform, protect the ecology, which includes the vegetation that holds the dune together, and invite all to enjoy. Preserving the landform is really paramount, because without the landform, there is no ecology to protect or a location for folks to enjoy, as we all want the beach to be around for generations. I think everyone would agree that Duxbury Beach is the heart of the town and central to its identity. And the town's comprehensive plan envisioned Duxbury states that when folks were asked what they most like about Duxbury, 83% responded Duxbury Beach. It's also important to note that that report states that it's important to continue supporting and funding DVR's efforts to protect and maintain the beach, as that then in turn protects the town. For generations, Duxbury Beach has been a central way of life in Duxbury, but it wasn't always that true. And that back in the late 1800s, the town of Duxbury sold the beach to developers, whose intention was to build over 350 homes and the beach would become private. Fortunately, a group of forward-thinking citizens banded together, raised the money, and purchased the beach, intent on keeping it accessible to all. In the 1900s, that group was called Duxbury Beach Association, and they forged a relationship with the town of Duxbury that we still maintain today. That relationship has a deep, deep history and a change. This is a very busy slide, it's in a PDF, but I'm going to run through it really quickly. And that from the 1970s to 2006, FEMA paid for 75% of all damage incurred. The other 25% was split by the town and DVR for their respective portions. The town paid for the least amount, and DVR paid for Duxbury Beach Park. That all changed in 2007 when FEMA decided that they would no longer provide funding to Duxbury Beach. DVR then appealed the decision, and of course, with American courts, that took more than one year. For five years, they battled, and unfortunately, the decision stood. This meant that the town and DVR were both responsible for all maintenance and for all damages incurred. In 2013, right after that, Storm Nemo hit, and that caused more than a million dollars in damage. The DVR town agreement provided that the town would cover their portion of the storm damage costs. At this point, the town came to DVR and requested that the agreement be changed to make a predictable amount that the town cost could provide for services, maintenance, and for protection of the beach, and therefore, the town. DVR agreed to this new arrangement. The lease was raised to 600,000 and kept there for four years, and then an agreement of 50,000 dollar increase each year thereafter, which brings us to the lease that we're looking at today. DVR held the cost at a million dollars, as it was last year, whereas the storm intensity and frequency is still increasing, sea levels are still rising, and we're posing more and more risk to the beach and the town itself. The Duxbury Beach Lease is a significant contributor to the Duxbury Beach Reservation ability to maintain the landform. By preserving the beach, DVR helps protect the town's coastline, the ecology, and the lifestyle that has come to this beautiful barrier beach and bay, as well as the 14.9 miles of coastline with the municipal, commercial, and residential real estate. For example, the school campuses are built on a flood plain. If the barrier beach wasn't there, that area would look significantly different. So right now, what's going on in Duxbury Beach? In recent years, DVR has invested over 5 million dollars in beach structure. Currently, there's a 1.8 million dollar beach structure works underway. That nourishment that Rainey spoke about for the nourishment of the seawall, it is 1,000 tons less than the amount we are putting on the beach right now, and that's on Ocean Side, starting at the bridge at what folks refer to as the resident beach, all the way to crossover one. The work and the investment is possible and will continue because DVR has a coastal resiliency plan, the phrase we've heard several times earlier this morning. We hold all the permits required. Currently, Duxbury Beach is the only barrier beach in Massachusetts that holds permits for proactive work. This allows DVR to move forward as funding and material becomes available, using nature-based solutions to make the beach structure as strong as possible. I can tell you without a doubt that without the coastal resiliency work DVR is doing, the residents of Duxbury would not see the protection and enjoyment that our healthy barrier beach provides. I also wanted to point out that we're outstanding stewards of the funds we receive. In fiscal year 2023, for example, 94 cents of every dollar spent was on supporting programs to further our mission. It should come as no surprise that the vast amount and majority of that is spent on preserving the beach structure. As DVR continues to focus on our mission, we're asking for your vote to support the beach lease, as we continue to preserve Duxbury Beach, protecting the town for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize the gentleman in the back on my left first, and then we'll see on the lower level. Yes. If I could ask, just hold up for a second. Apparently, there's a problem with your microphone. I'm sure it's a wonderful speech, but we can't hear it. No. It may come to that, but we're not going to start with you yelling.
Is this one working? Oh, much better. Hey! All right, I'll start over real quick.
Start all over.
Okay. Andrew Marshall, Lantern Lane, it's really loud now. Avid beachgoer, squeaky wheel, so. I'm advocating that we vote yes on Article Ten, and I believe the Duxbury Beach Reservation has made great strides and efforts moving back towards a balance of conservation and recreation. We believe steps are taking, such as proposed escorting and increased deterrence around the crossovers will increase sticker sales this coming year. We feel it's a trend that will continue to go up, and I want to ask everyone to vote for Article Ten, so thank you.
Thank you. I'll recognize the woman down here on my right-hand side, and then you, sir.
Sarah Madigan, 10 South Pastor Lane. Avid beachgoer, been in town for 27 years, had birthday parties on the beach, loved driving on every year. I would beg to differ a little bit with the DVR presentation. Those three equal-sized circles, I think enjoyment needs to be shrunk way down. Yes, we're preserving, yes, we're protecting, but I think the enjoyment piece gets missed. I think the birds are enjoying a lot more than we are as residents. And I just, I know it's too late this year to talk about the lease. I don't want to see the beach closed. I heard Rainey on WATD saying if this doesn't pass, then we might not have a beach at all this summer. But I would propose that the selectmen really work a lot harder at negotiating a lease, maybe even considering for every day that the beach is closed, 1,400 dollars is refunded back. That's the cost of the lease over a year, 365 days. You know, I just, I just think paying a million dollars, we bought our stickers already, so I'm paying for a sticker to go out on the beach, and I'm paying a million dollars share of the taxes to keep the beach there. Please, just focus more on enjoyment. You all know my husband is a former selectman. I used to get really aggravated with him and say, why aren't you limiting sales? It's crazy to sell 8 million stickers and then limit to 300 people coming on, and I thought that was kind of an unfair practice. That didn't fly well with him, but I just am asking, I wish the selectmen would take a more stringent tact on this. I feel like we just pass everything off to the DVR and throw our hands up and say, well, they know more about what the state rules are, they know more about the birds. They're a not-for-profit, so, you know, let them go after their funds, but my tax dollars should be somehow tied to my enjoyment. Thank you.
Thank you. So the gentleman up.
My name's David Amory. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. 18 Purdon Road. I'm also a member of the Coastal Resiliency Task Force, and at first, I do want to thank Chris Lutazi for her presentation very much. The priorities of the, and I fully support this article, the priorities of the task force, the Coastal Resiliency Task Force, are to combat the climate change. In particular, the storm surge and sea level rise in vulnerable areas. Our priorities include proactive coastal resilience. They include participation of stakeholders, include outreach and education, adaptation of, and strategies for land use regulations, adaptation of street level and bridge elevations, and we're all certainly following with interest the progress of the Snug Harbor Project. However, our number one priority is to support and thank the Duxbury Beach Reservation for its efforts, its ongoing efforts. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, this year, 366 days a year, to protect our very fragile barrier beach. It's an extraordinary beach, we all know that. Without it, it really is to allow it, all this restoration and nourishment is to help the beach continue to protect our bay and protect our livelihood in Duxbury. We have an extraordinary quality of life on the coastline. So just remember this, it's very simple. Duxbury is the gift of the bay, and the bay is the gift of the beach. Please vote yes on Number Ten. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne Kingsley, 126 Lake Shore Drive. I just have a few concerns. First of all, in the presentation, she said that this was meant in the beginning for everyone to enjoy. That's at a cost, because not everyone is allowed to enjoy the beach unless you pay. So that's not really the whole mission of the Duxbury Beach Reservation to provide. All preservation of the beach, I think we've done this before, we've talked about it before, the vegetation and everything, 100% for that, but building the wall changed the whole location of things, forcing more water and more damage to the reservation that's being done. So we're being asked to put out more money of our taxes, which I do have a problem doing, because it costs money to go to the beach, so it's not open for everybody to enjoy. And I just think if we're going to preserve it, that's fine, but it is a cost. It's not for everyone to enjoy, as you say. And I just think we should, really should be mindful of that when we're telling, you can go, because it's not really true.
Thank you.
James Lampard, 148 Washington Street. I spoke to some people before the meeting, and was told that we would hear what the thoughts have been, particularly by the beach reservation, on what is the contingency plan, the reservations plan, if the town were not to lease the beach? I think that is high on every I think that is high on everyone's, hey, what might happen if we don't? And I'd very much appreciate hearing what those plans are. I am morally certain that they've been thoroughly discussed by both the reservation and the
Mr. Reed, did you have some comments?
Thank you. I thought I'd give you the town's perspective first because I just asked Chris and she said it was okay. So that's a question, sorry about that. That's a question I've been wondering myself for the last week or two. I've met with staff. It's one hell of a question because it's a serious challenge. And the answer is, the short answer is, as of July 1st, the beach would be closed to recreational activity, and the town would essentially pack up shop and head home. The longer, more detailed answer is this. The term of the proposed beach lease runs from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th of 2025. Beach stickers went on sale on February 20th of this year. The beach stickers are valid for one full year with an effective start date of April 1st, 2024, and they expire on March 31st, 2025. With or without the passage of Article 10, the town's DPW would still perform the annual assortment of activities, which happen early in the season, such as maintaining the crossovers, parking lot sweeping, trash pickup, and setup of the wooden access ramps and beach mat. But if the lease is not approved, we've been discussing the options for current sticker holders, anybody that's bought one in the last few weeks, resident and non-resident, and this is what we've got for options. We would first offer a full refund for stickers purchased prior to March 9th, which is today's date, the date of the annual town meeting action. The refund request period would end or close on Friday, March 29th, 2024. And secondly, for people wanting to keep their stickers for what would be a shortened season, April 1st of 2024 through June 30th, which is 91 days, we could consider offering a prorated refund for those 91-day sticker holders. For people purchasing stickers, resident and non-resident, after today, prorated stickers could be sold that would again be valid for 91 days, which is April 1st, '24, to June 30th, '24. All beach stickers would expire on June 30th, 2024, since there would be no lease to allow access beyond that date. The Powder Point Bridge would remain open, but the parking lots on the east end would be closed. Porta-potties would be removed from the beach, trash pickup would no longer occur at the frequency which it does during the beach season, and aside from the occasional police patrol, the presence of town staff would be absent from the beach since beach rangers wouldn't be necessary, staff at the guard shack would not be necessary, et cetera. In terms of enforcement, the beach would be viewed as any other privately-owned property in town. The police department would cross the bridge to check the area, and if there were no issues, they would leave. There would be no police officers assigned to the beach, and the property owner would then be responsible for cars parking on private property. If they choose to do so, the DBR would have to pay for police details to monitor people crossing the bridge and trying to use the beach. The beach would be closed to recreational vehicles while pedestrian activities could be allowed with setbacks. The issue would be vehicles within 100 meters of the historic chick locales. The beach access road or the back road is in two parts, north of the resident lot and south of the resident lot. Both are private as both segments are wholly on DBR property. People cutting through the seawall neighborhoods in Marshfield would not be allowed as they are not considered essential as defined by the state, nor are they recreational. Also, since the back road is not a public way, the town could only enforce criminal law, not civil citation infractions. A byproduct of this scenario could be similar to what we saw during the pandemic. Our smaller town public beaches, such as Cove Street, Shipyard, Landing, and Howlands, could be under greater stress for access and could easily become overwhelmed. The town would have to consider how to manage access to these beaches, such as resident versus non-resident access, parking considerations, sticker requirements, if any, if beach operations staff could be redeployed to these areas, et cetera. So I give you this information not to scare you, it's not a scare tactic, but we have to be able to know what we're going to do on Monday morning because it's going to be here in less, you know, than a day and a half. The other thing to consider, and Sarah, you raise a great point about how we negotiate the lease. Over the course of the last couple of years, I've invited members of the finance committee and the board into a room with the finance director, myself, beach operations staff, the police department. We all sit down with the DBR to try and figure these things through. This year, we brought Andrew and some folks from Save Duxbury Beach, and I think there were very productive discussions. We're talking about alternatives to what we can do to manage the birds on the beach to hopefully increase access. They're all, to do any of that requires state and federal permitting. We have to make sure everything would work. So we're looking to gain more access. Now, does that mean we're going to solve the plover problem? No, they're here. Anybody that thinks they're leaving, you're fooling yourselves. They're going to be here for a long, long time. The question now is, how do we extend the backside of the season? How do we get more days in August? And that's what we're shooting for. So we're looking at alternatives to try and figure out how to manage the lease terms. So that's, that's our challenge at the moment. The other thing to consider, sure, the town's going to lose revenue. What are you going to do to the business owners? What are you, what are you going to, sorry, because these are my friends. What are you going to do to, my buddy Mike sells pizza or FarFest. You're going to screw him? Is that what you really want to do? You think you're sending a message? You're not. I'm a resident, lived here 20 years. I get emotional because it's just stupid. It's a stupid idea. If anybody thinks you're going to solve the problem, you're wrong. That's what I got to say. Thanks.
I think I thank Rainey for frankly, obviously, if the town just walked away and the beach reservation did nothing, there would be all kinds of both practical and very important issues that would have to be solved. What I really was interested in hearing was, I assume, and I hope I'm correct, that if the town did not lease the beach, perhaps not this year, leased it this year, but going forward, the beach reservation recognizes how important it is and its responsibilities for preserving that beach. I assume that the reservation has some type of what-what-we-do-if-contingency-plan, and that's what I was really interested in hearing.
So I wrote this down as one of the three dozen questions that might come up, and I want to make sure that I speak clearly, so I'm going to refer to my notes. So obviously, Rainey has spoken on several different topics of what would happen if it wasn't approved. So on July 1st, because the lease expires on June 30th, it runs with the town's fiscal year, on July 1st, if Duxbury Beach Reservation didn't have the enforcement of beach operations, we would be out of compliance with our permit under the state. That permit that we were told we needed to join, if you will, in 2018 allows us to have recreational vehicles in our parking lots, on the back road, and on the beach. If we didn't have the enforcement, because it's written in our permit by the town and everything they did, we would be out of compliance, which means we wouldn't be able to have vehicles on our property. They could drive over the bridge, but they wouldn't be able to cut through, drive, or any of that. So what would happen is, folks obviously could access pedestrian-wise, pointing that out, but what we would have to do as a reservation is we'd have to file a new beach management plan. Now, unfortunately, there's an adherence of 100-meter setback, which is a federal requirement for chick activity. They would look historically at three years of our activity to find out where chick activity is. That is right through our parking lots. That would all of a sudden be carte blanche, you can't go there. So we would need to confirm with the state that while there are chicks on site, we would ask for permission to drive within those required setbacks, and they would have to give us permission and get approval from the feds. That has not been done before, so we're talking uncharted waters. But I think it's important to say that that, of the million dollars, after 300 goes to pay for the chicks and the monitoring, which is required for the town to be able to invite people to enjoy the beach, we wouldn't be able to do the work that we're doing. I just said that we spent 1.8 million. We would have to make really tough decisions. If we're down 700,000 from the income that we depend on to protect this town, then we'd have to make the decisions of where best to put the money and how much of it that we had to spend. We wouldn't be doing this proactive work, I can assure you. We would be back to where we were six years ago, and we would be waiting for the storms to come. Most of you remember 1991. The entire beach, north of the bridge and down to High Pines, was gone. If I just wanted to replace right now from the bridge to crossover one, we're talking over $10 million. If we don't do this proactive work, we are not going to have our beach for as long as we hope.
Thank you. Is there anybody who has a specific question or information they'd like to gather as opposed to expressing their opinion as to what we should do? Sir, please.
Lester Lloyd, 21 Washington Street. I just wanted to hear from fiscal advisory on how they determined their vote on the reservation.
Mr. Chin.
Thank you. Thanks, Lester. So the fiscal advisory voted 3-3 split around this article. I think the folks who voted against this article were concerned about the cost of the lease. I think if you, if you go through the history, the sticker sales used to be a very large profit center for the town. They actually used to pay for the majority of our capital within Article 6. And those revenues aren't here anymore, and I think there is, you know, a better understanding, we're getting to a better understanding of the overall costs to run the beach, but, you know, there still is some, some issues around clarity and, you know, how much does it actually cost to run the beach that are really concerning to folks on the committee.
My name is. My name is Sue Rourke. I live at 63 Soul Avenue. I am also on the board of the beach reservation. I just had a couple of comments. Firstly, acknowledging the frustration that people who enjoy the beach primarily through off-of-road vehicle travel have. I did want to point out that the beach is very, very early closed. I don't think it was closed at all last year. And I also wanted to dispel the notion that somehow the reservation isn't making every single effort they could possibly to allow greater access for all on the beach. Our habitat conservation plan is a very thick document, much thicker than many other beaches. That's because the staff diligently researches and advocates for exceptions to the rules, essentially, and we do actively pursue all the resources that are possible through the regulations to promote access. A case in point would be that there are 50, I'll call them allowances, granted by the state by which an endangered bird can be harassed or, you know, otherwise harmed. That's 50 for the entire state, and Duxbury Beach Reservation has advocated to acquire 24, so nearly half of those accommodations are here in town. So they do put a tremendous amount of effort into maintaining access as much as possible.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my left.
Andre Martikini, 110 Heritage Lane, and also a director of the Duxbury Beach Reservation. I just wanted to reiterate one thing, as Sue was just mentioning, that there's this notion that somehow the reservation doesn't try to maintain access to the beach, and that is completely false. We, we do everything we can to maintain access. Years ago, before we had professional management, the Duxbury Beach Reservation was a completely volunteer group, and the regulatory environment at that time was very different. Today, with our habitat plan, you know, you just can't say, well, we're going to just ignore it. We cannot ignore it. And the Duxbury Beach Reservation works very closely with the town, and it's not only Duxbury Beach that opens, makes the decisions of what parts of the beach are to open. The town has a relationship in that, too. So depending on funding and personnel available and all kinds of things that go into those decisions. So it's not Duxbury Beach that's making the call necessarily. So the other thing is, you know, in response to Jim Lampert's question, you know, we don't have a contingency plan, right? So there is no contingency plan this year if we don't pass this. So we, we, you know, even though we might have some limited access for a month or two over the period of the summer, that still leaves 10 months of time that the beach is open to everyone. So please, vote for this article.
I need, that motion needs to be made at a microphone. But I think we may be coming up on a vote, but I'll recognize this woman in the back and then see where we are.
Thank you. Deirdre Wyler, live at 5 Shepherd's Crook. I just wanted to sort of follow on to Mr. Lampert's comments about the contingency plan. I think frankly, it's shameful that we haven't thought through that. You know, unfortunately, we're at a point where we have to approve this, and I advocate for that, absolutely. But I think that we are all a lot more educated than that to deal with this on an annual basis. I mean, this is a one-year lease. We're just literally kicking the can down the, down the road. And I appreciate all the proactive work that's being, that's being done right now on the beach, but frankly, that's all being done with the assumption that this is going to pass. So I think that it behooves us as a community to not only sit down and talk about these hard questions, but to figure them out at, at a place where we can all kind of live together. And I don't think that being held over the barrel from a negotiation standpoint is the right approach. And I think transparency from a cost standpoint, line items, what the town pays for, what the DBR pays for, I think it has to be a lot more, you know, transparent to the, to the town taxpayers.
I suspect that people pretty much know how they're going to vote right now.
Excuse me, I really need to speak, if I could, please. Because it's totally different than anything we've spoken about so far.
Okay, please.
So I thought for, on the select board, on two occasions, on November 6th and February 12th, to talk about the predation program. On June 8th, our wonderful and amazing animal control officer, Eddie Ramos, was called to the beach because there was a coyote pup sitting in the reeds looking for help. And as it turns out, the lactating mother had been sniped and killed, and the three pups that were her babies were left to die starving and dehydrated on the beach. Pup was the one survivor that we know about. Brought him to wildlife, they treated him with K, vitamin K. You treat animals with vitamin K when they have consumed poison. So two things here. I would like to ask the town for a consideration to not allow lactating mothers to be sniped when there are pups on the ground, because we call that cruelty. And if we got to call at the animal shelter that someone shot their dog in the backyard, and there were three pups left in the backyard to starve. and there were three pups left in the backyard to starve, we would arrest them, we would charge them, we would fine them, and they would go to jail. And that's something that we need to think about. Who are we? Are we okay with being cruel to animals for the sake of saving other animals on the beach? I don't think so. And then the other thing is Cindy, our chairperson on the select board, when they were talking about the lease for North Hill Country Club, she brilliantly asked, "Please do not use rodenticides at North Hill," because birds of prey pick up the mice and the rats and whatever else has consumed that. They eat them, and then they die. And we get equally as number, the equal number of birds of prey that have been hit by a car and also have been poisoned. So please, let's make sure that in the lease, the lease is very benign, it seems to be the same year after year, let's have an active conversation about this, because we need to decide as a town whether we want to turn our blind eye to cruelty, or if we want to say, "No, no, I don't care what the state says, I don't care what the feds say, we're not going to be shooting lactating mothers at a certain point." We need to, if we're going to eliminate them, we need to do them before the pups are on the ground, because leaving them out there to starve to death and die from dehydration is gross. Do that, that we need to, we need to decide who we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready? Are we ready for a vote?
We got one more comment here.
I've had enough one more comments.
Well, I'm David Madigan from 10 South Pasture Lane.
Mr. Madigan, please make it quick and germane.
I am going to make it quick. I just heard that the DBR will not have a permit for vehicles to be on the road if we don't pass the lease. Does that mean that Situit and Gurnet cannot access their homes on the beach if we don't pay for the lease? And if that is going to be the case, then shouldn't Plymouth be kicking in some money on the lease in order to keep the road open?
The short answer is that, sorry, the short answer is that the state has deemed certain vehicles as essential. So basically, there's two different types of vehicles according to the state. Essential vehicles and recreational vehicles. Our permit allows recreational vehicles in our parking lots, our roads, and on the beach. Essential vehicles are considered residents of Gurnet Sequish, renters of Gurnet Sequish, visitors of Gurnet Sequish, service providers of Gurnet Sequish, and contractors of Gurnet Sequish, as well as fire and police. No comment.
Mrs. McNabb, and then we're going to vote.
I felt it important to just point out a couple of things. In regards to Ms. Curtis's comments about the predator program, we hear her, we are listening, we too are concerned about that, but we also are being told that as a town, as a select board, we are very limited in our control on that issue. In regards to, whoops, second thing, just talking about Plymouth, Plymouth, yes, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Madigan. Thank you. I've been sitting down too long, I've forgotten how to get up to the microphone and actually talk. I miss it. In regards to Plymouth, we, I personally, and I believe that other members of the board are very interested in engaging a conversation about that. I plan to discuss this with our town council. We need to, whether it's intermunicipal agreement or a number of, I have to believe, options must be available to us as a town to try to incur, get some of the funds that we are, you know, we are hemorrhaging money here, and I believe strongly that the residents out at Plymouth need to incur some of those costs, whether it be for the wear and tear on the bridge, whether we do this by tolls, whether we do this by, again, an intermunicipal agreement, we need to come up with some strategies. So we hear you. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote?
No.
Yes.
No.
Can we agree to that? Please.
Candice Martin, 59 Gurnet Road, more of a comment, I understand the importance of the projects that DBR is executing, and it goes to the point of Plymouth. So not only does Plymouth benefit from us maintaining the roads to their residents, but we also do a lot of support services, where, their police, the fire. So I really think that the town needs to be more forceful with the town of Plymouth and take actions to help support the cost of the lease. We ask them, they say no. Well, what is the downfall for them to be prohibited from accessing? I know we just talked about they have to have access, but we don't have to maintain the conditions of that road to a fine state. So I just, I think we should really have, the town should take more of a proactive role in having discussions with Plymouth on this.
I guess I'm the last one. Alicia Babcock, 9 Ocean Road South. I'm speaking as a resident of the Gurnet area, and I'm also the chair of the SEWOL committee, so I'm not, my comments aren't representing the SEWOL committee, but I just wanted to tell you that it's part of my perspective. I live very close to the Duxbury Beach Reservation property line, and I see a lot of what goes on there. And I don't know that they really get enough credit for everything they're doing there. I know that a lot of the discussion today is revolving around the million dollars, and it is a lot of money. Without that beach being nourished properly, it's the same argument that we made last year advocating for the SEWOL. If there's a breach on that barrier beach, it is going to be devastating to this town. The bay is very shallow, it cannot withstand ocean water, and all of the projects that we have going on coastal resilience seaways in town, sidewalk projects, road raising, anything in town, we may as well not even bother doing them because it'll be all underwater. We're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars toward a bridge that will ultimately wind up going nowhere. And I apologize, I don't remember the woman's name from the shelter that was speaking here, but I have been at those select board meetings where she has spoken toward the point of the animals, but also very brilliantly toward advocating toward the Plymouth residents, their tax money not going to Plymouth but coming to Duxbury. We provide all of their services, and it makes perfect sense to do that. So what I would like to, I would like to support that, and I'd also like to propose that maybe some of this energy that we've got in this room could be put toward, following through with that, because that would really help to subsidize this lease going forward, and it makes perfect sense. And the last thing that I would like to say is that if this lease does not go through, it will affect also the nourishment that we're doing down on the SEWOL side as well. The DBR has been very gracious, allowing us to use their northern lot. We did that whole project this year with the staging area, the equipment, the sand, everything coming through that parking lot and over their dune. We would not be able to do any of that without them. They were extremely cooperative and helpful to us, they didn't charge us anything, and I just think that, you know, I understand that the birds are a problem, I understand that the enjoyment of the beach has become limited, and it's terrible. But we need to start focusing really on what matters here, and the safety of the public and the health of that beach is the hands-down most important thing. So I would like to personally thank Chris for everything that she's done. There's a reason why that beach has gotten awards for best restored beach, and I think that we should all really think about what we're voting for when we vote on this article, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Article number 10, the Duxbury Beach lease, it takes a 2/3ers vote to pass. I'm going to ask for a vote now. One for yes, two for no. So it's now 12:30. What is the, what is the room's pleasure, to continue on and/or to stop for lunch? Continue?
Yes.
Yes, continue? Okay. Okay. Article number 11, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to fund the town of Duxbury's Fourth of July parade ceremonies and related activities, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $25,000 from free cash. The select board voted 401 to recommend, finance committee voted unanimously to recommend.
We have motion and a second. Are there any questions or concerns about the Fourth of July parade funding? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote on number, on Article 11, Fourth of July appropriation. Voting is closed. Article passes 96 to 2. Article 12, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $120,000 for the purposes of recording and live streaming school committee and other school meetings, communication support, and Dragon TV equipment and support, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $120,000 from the Cable Television PEG Access Special Reserve Fund. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the superintendent. The select board and the finance committee voted unanimously to support.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions about the educational cable access and technology article? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Voting is closed. Article passes 91 to 4. Article 13, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town authorize the select board to enter into and execute an extension contract for the management of the North Hill Country Club and Golf Course located at 47 Mary Ave, including concessions for optional slash additional contract term of three years in excess of the initial three-year contract term. Excuse me. Select board and finance committee voted unanimously to support.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, I will call for a vote on Article 13. Voting is closed. Article passes 81 to 5.
No, I think they were here for the beach.
We're coming up on two articles that I suspect will take some discussion. It is about PFAS, the two articles that deal with a plan and design. Are people interested in taking a break? Can I show of hands? Show of hands if you want to go take a break and go have lunch. We can eat lunch in the building. If you, if you think it's a bad idea, you just want to stay and force your way through.
No.
Can I have, can I have a motion? Can I have a motion to recess this meeting until 1:15, that's 45 minutes from now? Lunch is being served in the cafeteria. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it.